Uh, November 28th. Got a quorum. Um, is 21st Century Mill here or am I opening this up?
We're not opening it up. Um, today ended up sending me a request to continue the hearing until May 2019.
Okay.
Because they want to wait and have Kong Kong play in on the runoff. So I talked to Donna. I wasn't sure whether or not we could continue the hearing for that length of time. And we discussed it and there's nothing that we know of that would prevent us from doing that. So um, let's just go ahead and continue it to May.
And we can't close it and reopen it because?
Well, unless he was asked for withdrawal. Um, and he hasn't done that. He doesn't want to do that. So it does kind of make sense to just continue it to May versus having to come every meeting and so.
Yeah. Do we have um?
Have a schedule for May?
Yeah, I printed out. So it would either be, so he requested the first meeting, which would be May 8th, the second Wednesday, but that's the same week as town meeting. So I don't know if you want to have a meeting that week. Um, and then the second meeting in May would be the 22nd.
Um, I think it's probably fine if we do it today. Uh, I think we've done it the same week.
Happy.
We've had a meeting the same week as the town meeting? Town meeting on Monday and we meet on Wednesday?
Yeah, we're not.
I think that's a lot just in case we extend it a few days.
Alright.
But it's a two-way.
Yeah, okay. So?
Yeah, I'd say the 22nd.
Yeah, that's fine.
What does it matter? Two more weeks at that point.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
At least we just need a motion.
Okay, will we continue the hearing for 21st Century Mill um, to uh, May 22nd uh, 2019 at 7:30? Is that sound open?
[laughing]
It's 7:30.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Cause nobody wants to see that for until then. Alright, Fred?
How's everybody doing?
Good. First, first we're discussing retention basin, AC.
Yes. Alright, so I put this together for you guys. Andy wants me to have an idea for the So we have cleaned as far as we can for the time of year that it is. I probably should have stopped before we get today, but we removed.
Can I just read this?
Sure.
Yeah. I just want to know what Andy's saying.
Oh, I wrote it.
Oh, okay. Well, you can summarize that if you want.
No, it's okay. So basically all it says is that DPW came out, uh, partially going into the pond for the flooding at Century Mill. I'm sorry, it's like well, South Golden Road, but those signs have been there for flooding since before we ever cut a tree there. So it's, it may be worse this year than previous years. Um, so yes, we cleaned the ponds. We did what we could during the time of year. I included that. We ended up by putting erosion controls all around everything. You know, everything was turned wet around the pond. So we've done everything we can until that.
So by just the process of digging it out?
Exaggerating around.
Oh, you lost vegetation?
Oh, we took vegetation intentionally out of the pond.
Okay.
Because that's what they wanted. They wanted it. Um, but you know, stabilizing grass and stuff that all got destroyed by the excavators and trucks moving around. There's nowhere to avoid it. Probably should have just said, no, we're not doing it. But it's all been contained by erosion controls and it's going to be higher seeped, you know, in Germany until the spring. We're going to stabilize it with a tag fire and all that. So um, we've done everything we can for the year on that. Um, there's probably pretty expensive left on my part because it's just a non-stop. That being said, um, if you look at the rainfall totals for this year, um, I don't have the numbers department, but I think since March, we average were 15 inches over the average in March and 17 in August is our average. Uh, so I mean, everything's saturated. There's the weather, the rainfall, there's no, so I'm not saying, I refuse to accept the fact that we'll be pouring water. Now, we do have the responsibility to handle ponds and we did the best we could during the time of year, but I can't touch them again. So they're right next to what's on the side. But that's essentially what I'm trying to do.
So Erica, you went there after the work was done today?
They were putting up the silt fence when I was out there. So the pond still has water in it. Um, hopefully.
And it's supposed to just have like a little bit and then drain, right? It's not supposed to be sitting, standing water in there.
It's not, it, it, there'd be standing water, but after about 48 hours, it should fully drain if it's functioning as it was supposedly designed. Um, but this basin hasn't really been maintained um, for the last couple of years. And I think it's just filled with mud and vegetation and sand layer that's on the bottom where the water's supposed to infiltrate through. That's just been covered. So that's what they were trying to do, excavate that nasty material out.
But because it was so wet, it was just tough to do.
Well, it's tough because everything right now is just saturated and soft.
We had track equipment.
Yeah, and trying to do it when it's wet, you just re, re, having the sediment just kind of go back into the pond.
Maybe we pull vegetation out. Hopefully the mobiles and the caddo systems will help. But there's nothing where I can do this year. I mean, it's, unless we do it when it's fully frozen and processed. I don't even know if that's going to work. But um, I mean, I probably should have had to stop that this Thursday, Saturday. Some of these are putting in erosion controls and we're going to attack fire. It's going to happen this spring.
So when the road gets transferred to a public road, then we're responsible for that basin, right?
Correct.
How often are those basins typically cleaned out?
They, these ones, once or twice a year.
I think, yeah, they're, you have to inspect it, I think, at least quarterly or twice a year and then maybe, you know, annually.
Yeah, I mean typically you um, most down, you clean it once in the fall, once in the spring. I mean, that's usually, I, I mean, the recommendations is more than that, but that's usually, um, you know, I think, you know, once. And then looking at it, um, you know, multiple times throughout the year, especially on years where we have really high rainfall.
We weren't finding much sediment coming out. We were getting a lot of sand and siphon that back. It was mostly vegetation.
Yeah, so the.
Pond area, the four bay is not sand, so it's.
Right. So there's pre-train it for the basins, the four bay area, and that's really probably what you have to maintain most of the time because that's really where the sediment should be settling out to. So.
Is the four bay working?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So you're not, you're not seeing a lot of that sediment get into the action? Okay.
I mean, now whatever got kicked up into the water has moved. We're going to find out in the spring whether it won't be seen.
I mean, it's not infiltrating, so there's got to be sediment. There's got to be something that's clogging that sand layer and the basin, but.
Short of opening up the six-inch relief fountain, dumping it into the wetlands and finding out, I can't do it.
No, you got to really wait for it to dry.
That's my only other option.
You don't need to create a disturbance. Yeah, and Kong Kong will have issues with it.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, so is this something that Joe needs to go and look at more and?
No, this was really, uh, so we went out, two, was it two weeks ago Fred? Joe Lynch and I went out because he had called me. He was concerned about the flooding. He was worried that this basin might be exacerbating things on Spectacle Hill because he saw the standing water. He was like, oh, it might need to be maintained. So that's why we went out.
I took a video of the flow coming out of the outlet pipe. If you want to see it, it's not much.
Is there, is there flooding issues?
Yeah, I mean, this, there's always been flooding issues on Spectacle. Um, so where, where the intersection with South Golden Road is.
I mean, this is the amount of water coming out of the, that's what it's.
It says 50%.
50? It's not a substantial amount of water.
And when was that taken? Today?
It's a trickle. It's not, I mean, it's not a gushing 15-inch pipe. It's massive amounts of water. But if you look at the wetlands upstream from that, they're all saturated. I mean, they're absolutely.
I mean, the flood in the back of my house is completely, I mean, I had my basin flooded Sunday, so.
I mean, the past three months were 130% over what we should have been for that training.
Yeah.
And Fred, the alley construction, it's never raised high enough in the basin to actually over top into the grate, right? It's only ever gone over the weir.
Yeah.
The emergency spillway.
Yeah, exactly. So.
It's only just the.
And that's good.
Yeah, that's a good sign, yeah.
Which is designed to be there, but it's supposed to be.
Okay, so there's no action to take here or anything or just?
No, it was really just update the board. That's why I asked Fred to talk about it.
Okay. So moving on, unless anybody has anything to add. So phases two and four accepting the road. We met with selectmen and it came up and I think probably a good approach for that in Milton Road is, I think we still have to confirm with the fire department, but I think Erica's going to suggest that we do a 30 by 40. What's on the end of a common driveway?
It's within the road right away. Road right away is 50 feet in that phase.
Yeah.
There on Milton Road. So you have the room to do that.
Yeah, so that seems to make sense for the residents that are right at the end there and, you know.
So what is it that's being proposed?
Uh, instead, instead of a subdivision turnaround, a huge turnaround, uh, just what's at the end of a common driveway is a 30 by 40.
Oh, okay.
A rectangle.
Okay.
Just enough for a three-point turn or something.
Sure.
Um, so I would be fine with that.
Is it fire department?
Well, it's like we just have to find out from the fire department.
Yeah. Did they pick a sheet?
They did. It's the, you probably have.
Oh, that's good. Um, so if they're on board, you know, I guess, you know, the work won't start till spring. So Duchan might have to, we'd have to update the plans or whatever, but.
Something like that. I guess I would need to know what you guys want to do with the sidewalk, how that's going to run. If it's going to terminate at that rectangle, I mean, it needs some direction from you guys on that.
Yeah, you're not going to have the sidewalk go around it.
Right.
That just terminated right.
Right there.
Right there, yeah. Is that what it is now?
Uh, yeah, it terminates at the, perhaps.
Or the temporary, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, that'd be fine.
I would assume we would just do between minutes, burn through that rectangle.
Yeah.
There's no point in putting granite that's never going to be used.
So I think that would be the easiest time, everybody.
I agree. That would be easy.
Yep, so we should have thought of that.
So technically, if you look at that diagram, we would be accepting part of the road that extends into basin. And not that it really matters, but I just thought for clarification because we keep saying phase two and phase four. Technically, if we accept all the way up to the dead end on Milton, that's phase three. Phase three starts at room stage 2900 and so.
Uh, that's in the middle of lot 16, correct?
Yeah.
Since the right of way is 50 feet, we could head it in the current right of way and still stay within.
Well, I would think we'd want to extend it in front of the town as well.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, where, where is it being proposed? Like on this picture, where is it being proposed?
Is this 62B right there?
Sorry.
Is that 62B?
Uh, yeah. Yep. So you're talking, the phase line is actually right here in mid-lot. So we would actually have to make that.
Where's it mid?
Right, so, you know, where?
So according to this drawing, the phase line.
Why is it down?
Is it 2900?
Is.
Oh.
Right here at the edge of the property lines. So we would be talking about, I mean, the phase line was somewhere right here.
So you're going to go further down, some minutes?
Um, I think we could actually pick everything up right here and stay within the right of way, I think.
Oh yeah, because you can get to that driveway, right?
Yeah. I mean, I have to have Brandon do something a little bit, but if you guys can get everybody set up on the street, but.
So I mean, are the residents, are the sections going to lead to everyone turning around in their driveways?
Well, isn't it, I thought the 30 by 40 was going to go like this. Am I?
Well, the road right away, I don't know. I've never seen, so I don't know. Is it?
I mean, because the whole point is you drive up here and do a three-point turn and you turn around and go like that. So you, you're going to, I mean, it's going to be 40 feet wide.
You're going to want it.
Yeah, so it's still within the 50 feet. You're still within the 50 feet, but it's going to be 40 this way, 30 this way.
Even if they had to project that, I mean, we're talking 25 feet, 30 feet into the phase line.
I think that's, is there an issue with that for it going in the phase three?
No, I just wanted to clarify to the board.
Okay, yeah. No, I think that's, I think that's going to be, so then you don't have anyone turning people's driveways. They, they come down the end, they do the three-point turn, then they go back.
Yeah.
It's very similar to where I'm at at the very end.
Yep. Yeah, just need to make sure the slopes work out.
Yeah, yeah. But that's, that's what I was imagining is that's how your, your easiest three-point turns. And 40 feet wide, you have 50 feet, so you should be within your right of way.
Yep. I think that's it. Good for them. Anything else?
I mean, will it look strange if there's just dirt behind it and just a berm right there? Are people going to run over that? Like, we want to put some sort of a barrier behind it to let people know that it's, that's the end of the road.
They might wonder.
It needs to be something.
Yeah, because especially in winter time, people aren't going to see that and then keep going.
Well, we can put that on the plans or something, right?
Or boulders.
Yeah, some sort of boulders.
Yeah.
Give us some direction. We'll talk to Brandon.
Okay.
It's right behind you.
How you doing, buddy? Thanks, guys.
Alright, next up we got Duchan for Key's Farm subdivision.
You don't want to say loading.
To review and approve a minor modification to the approved section limits.
Couple things on the agenda. First thing to get into is just the modification here. Thanks for having us. And basically, um, we're here to show you a modification to the detention, I mean, the definitive subdivision plan specifically to stormwater in area number two, which is his basin. This is Hudson right here. Uh, this is Moderator Wade that comes in. This is the first basin that's on, on the, on the right. This is the, this is the second one up. And what had happened here is, um, during the construction process, we identified that the wetland line as identified on the plan was inaccurate. And what it turned out to be is we actually had a bad control point. And as the wetland line was located here, you know, was correct for a ways, and then obviously the point was about right in this area here. And kind of the further we got away from that point, everything they located, as you felt is mathematical, so it got worse and worse and worse. And essentially what that translated to is in the worst case, um, as seen on this red line, this is, this is the, what was shown on the original definitive subdivision plan. Once we went out, we fixed the error and then replotted, relocated the wetland flags. It's the new line, which in the field is still the same line. I guess that's, that's the first thing, it's really just on the plan. Um, it's represented by this red line here. So after the initial panic, really what it does is it impacts this first lot, lot one. So actually what we had to do is Greg had to rework this detention pond and move the whole thing uphill to account for, um, the wetland line being further uphill on the plan. Um, the way that actually worked out, this is kind of how the wetland is located. Everything kind of shifted. So as you come in the road, the wetland actually here as shown in the plan is actually, in the field is actually more room than what we had shown. And obviously here, there's less room. Um, so if you initially looked at, if you're starting over, you could actually, you could actually have done a larger basin down here in the bottom. Um, but obviously because we're trying to do this as a modification, we kind of wanted to keep it essentially the same as what we had and just shift everything uphill. So what Greg was able to do is what's shown here in red is we had a, essentially a berm down here. This is the hill coming down. And we just shifted this, that berm up the hill. And what that translated to, this was the original, there's a pair of catch basins here, a manhole that had a drainage pipe that came up discharged to this pond, which was originally here. It's now obviously much shorter. It comes out further uphill and, and basically hits this area.
So what was the elevation it was originally discharging at?
Um, it was about, I think it was 25, wasn't it? Wasn't it 25 the original one? Yeah, like three, looks like 325, 326, something like that.
What elevation is it now that it's charging at?
Now it's a lot, it's, it's higher. I don't know if that was planned here, but it's.
I think it's 33.
Looks like 32, 33.
So how?
Yeah, but it's a little high. It's actually raised up a little bit higher because the weight that it pounds is actually going to be a head wall there with the pipe further up. That way this doesn't get.
So you're still having the same amount of area going there?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a little bit more, obviously from the distance down here, a little bit going down there. Um, we obviously, Greg met with Fred, revised the drainage, kind of went over that. Fred can certainly weigh in on that, but from what Greg tells me, there wasn't any significant change, you know, essentially aside from bringing that up.
And you're able to daylight it and make it all work and?
Yeah. So really the only.
So you made, because usually when you go up, you don't, are you?
Right, right. So we definitely had that moment. But I mean, the only thing that we probably will end up coming in is it really impacts this first lot. So we're probably going to have to use an A and R just kind of between this, just to try to make the wells and septics work because we've got less real estate there to work on. But the first thing is obviously, you know, to get, um, the modification approved in the one. And then obviously we are going to have to go back to conservation and amend the order conditions as well.
And did you, so you submitted revised calculations or anything?
Yes.
And you reviewed all that?
Yes, and I sent my, everything that's acceptable, I sent it to Erica, I believe, November 6th.
So where was the original block line going? This?
So the lot line hasn't changed, but what this original line was, was the easement, you know, for the basin. It was basically set kind of what that high watermark would be. So now this will be the, we'll update that, that plan, search to move that easement. Probably put that in the same plan that we went in for the AR.
So with you raising it up, are you still able to provide the same amount of volume that you had under the original plan?
Yes.
Excuse me, Dino, what happened was the pipe coming out got raised. The pipe from manhole three out to head row three was a dropped manhole. So able to raise that pipe up.
Okay.
And then they raised the basin up. So everything, volume, foot for foot, it's theoretically the same. It just all, they happen to have that ability in manhole three.
That's pretty amazing.
Yeah, so there was like a tenth of drop in that manhole.
So that's how it works.
So now you've just got to.
I understand what you were looking, trying to figure out, but that's how it works.
Alright, that makes more sense.
It works for you.
Yeah, no, that was, that was just, I wanted to just get my hand wrapped around that some, but let's, yeah. So what do we need to?
We'll have to approve.
I'll make a promotion to approve the revised plan, um, just AC 4.1 dated 10/31/18, showing the revised modifications to these one of bases?
On favor?
Aye.
Nothing to sign on modification?
No, I made that something for the next meeting.
Okay. Um, next you want to discuss an extension to the paving season?
Yeah, so I'm the site contractor over at Keys Farm and, uh, we've been up against all the water. We got an extension before. Just soaked over there. So we wanted to pave on Friday. We talked to Fred. He's busy on another site they're paving on. Obviously want him there while we're paving. You guys want him there. We're looking to try and maybe let it dry up a little bit, grade on Saturday and pave on Monday. We're going to grade it all day on Saturday, no noise, just going to have one machine running. Then, uh, we're going to tarp the whole road, pull it off on Monday morning and then pave it.
What's the temperature supposed to be?
50 on Monday?
I forgot to look. I see a father.
Yeah, I think it's like 50.
Yeah, it's over 40.
Yeah, I thought it was like.
Small weather over here.
So if we wait any longer, it's going to start freezing next week.
When, how, what's the rain forecast after?
So, so it's going to rain Saturday night into Sunday. So we're going to tarp it. I already bought $4,000 worth of tarps.
You're going to grade it?
We're going to grade it Saturday morning.
Yeah.
Then tarp it Saturday night, take the tarps off on, on Monday morning.
Looks like Monday's your only chance.
Yeah.
At the long range. After Monday drops to 36. You know, so you'd be lucky to get Monday.
Well, I mean, that's why we have to just.
Yeah, you've got Sunday that's 48, Monday.
I mean, we're all set. We just wanted to dry out a little bit.
So you need two things. You need us to approve the extension, but also allow your work on Saturday.
Yes, please.
And what, so what is the work on Saturday consistent?
So we just have one grader running, that's it. No louder than a diesel pickup truck. No backup alarm, no nothing. We won't, you know, there's no banging, slamming.
So all the sub is, so you just have to regrade the sub that's there?
Exactly. You just got to fine grade it.
Yeah, you have all the.
Yeah.
Everything's going to place and stuff.
How long are you anticipating working inside?
So we'll work probably about six, seven hours.
Um, and you can't, you can't do that work on Friday?
We just want to give it as much time as we can to dry out.
Oh, it looks like it's going to pre-dry the next few days, but.
We just got two inches yesterday or the day before.
Oh, I see. You're trying to wait between.
Yeah, trying to get as much.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the weather, you're riding a super tight road.
You've seen, you've seen what kind of season we've had.
It's been horrible.
It's been the worst.
Yeah.
So what's happening with the runoff out there right now currently? Because I know you had the breakthrough in the silt fence.
Yes.
You guys repaired.
Yeah, we repaired.
So where, where is that sediment coming from? Is it just?
It was just coming down from the side of the hill. So now we redug out those temporary basins and it's going in there now.
Okay. And that's where it will continue to go as you guys pave.
Oh, yeah.
The temporary sediment basins set up.
And that's the first basin we're putting in after we're done. We're going to repair, I mean, do that complete basin.
So you're going to tarp the entire roadway or just a portion of it?
No, we're going to tarp the whole thing. I get 18 40 by 100 tarps coming.
I mean, there's no like runoff or, you know, you don't have stormwater management in place right now, but.
But it, but it doesn't matter. It saturates the concrete, the gravel.
Yeah, okay.
Fred, is that an appropriate, I don't know, procedure, practice, whatever you want to call it?
They just said it on Main Street too.
There's, um, no, they didn't, they did on the Main Street side.
Yeah.
They didn't do it for that reason. They did it to stabilize the ground below.
Oh, okay.
But anyway, because that stayed in place.
It was a stabilization fabric?
Yeah. Um, you asked at this.
It's a standard procedure, I guess.
It's.
I mean, should we have any concern that the gravel could potentially get wet? Because obviously.
Oh, yeah. And I mean, with the, with the top on it, it doesn't have the, the tops they're putting on because it's going to rain Saturday night.
Right, no, I get it.
So they're preventing, what, when they put it on, let's say, let's say it's saturated when you put it on, to give us an example, then it doesn't have an ability to dry because it's covered. So it's, it's, um, you know, it's already going to dry these next set, Thursday, Friday. So they're trying to prevent it from getting additional water.
Exactly.
There's nothing, is this, it's an, it's not a standard practice to do because usually you don't run into the issue. So it's something they're trying. So it's something they're trying to do to keep the stuff stabilized and not get any worse than it is.
So I guess my, the better question is, you'll be inspecting the gravel before they start the paving on Monday?
Right now, probably be going out now Saturday, I'll probably be going out Saturday too. If and when they're...
And you'll be there Friday too and...
Right, but Friday you're not doing anything but...
Yeah, yeah, but...
There's no work being done right now. A little bit of handwork around base, catch basins.
Yeah.
But now it's just a matter of, um, putting down the plastic, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll just grade on Saturday and put the plastic down at the end of the day.
Right.
And so Fred, if, you know, you go there on Monday and the tarp system didn't work or it didn't meet your satisfaction, you could shut down the, I mean, if it got saturated from the rain over the weekend?
Right. And I, from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, um, your paver is also saying it's too wet to pave?
Yes.
So, so the paver himself, if he went there Monday...
He wants to do it on Monday.
Right. I'm saying if he went on Monday, he could, he himself could feel it's too, um...
So that's his recommendation right now is he's saying to do it, to wait and to do it on...
On Monday.
Time to dry on Monday.
Yeah. We need to get it, so that's why we're letting it air dry for the next couple of days.
And then tarp it.
And we don't even want to drive trucks on it because the more you drive it, it's just going to pump it up and pump it up. So the less we, the more we stay off of it, the better it gets. Then we get in there on Saturday, we grade it all out. It's all hard. We go in there on Monday and pave it. I mean, it's our last, it's our last shot.
Yeah, it really is. And you were having some sort of a test company to verify?
Yeah, we have UTS going out there. So they'll be out there, they're looking for back from us and then there'll be density tests.
Oh, temperature.
Yep, temperature. Temperature date, Fred's going to be out there with temperature, I'm out there with temperature.
Well, I'm fine with the extension on Saturday if everything, you know, if Fred's out there and monitoring and...
I, I won't be out there the whole time, just so you know.
Yeah.
I have a plan on being there, but I will be there to...
Yeah, but I mean, you'll know what's going on.
And I will be there Monday, quest for the paving.
Witness wise.
Mm-hmm.
That grading can't be done Friday.
The longer...
I mean, we are juggling your...
I mean, Friday's going to be a great day for it to dry out. I mean, the less we stay, the more we stay off of it, the better off we are. I mean, the air dry, the sun.
That doesn't sound like, uh, it's going to be a lot of work.
No, I mean, the fact that it's just, just a grader for instance.
I don't want to throw a wrench in it, but I know whenever there's been just grading, there's been another sites, all sites, they always have, um, a truck and a front end loader for the greater needs or whatever the grader needs, some more gravel here or there. So I, I haven't seen just a grader on a site and come grading day.
Well, I mean, the whole thing of allowing Saturday as needed, you know, this is needed, so, if they have any chance of getting it done, so I'm okay with allowing it. So, I mean, other opinions?
I agree.
I'm good. You have a very tight window to get this done, so...
Yeah.
You guys know that we've really tried.
Yeah. So, um, we need, what, I guess two motions? Or should we do two different motions or on one? It doesn't matter.
Um, we need two different motions, yeah. And I, what I can do too, if, if the board chooses to go around work on Saturday, um, I do have some of the emails for some of the others. I'll just give them a heads up, hey, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
Or something.
Something else about Saturday? So it doesn't, every time this has happened, the police have come or whatever and you haven't had anything to, so they should get something written.
Maybe something.
So it's not, not just to your butters, but they should have it on site. So then you just give it to the, whoever comes.
What I typically do is I email the police chief. That's what I've done in the past and then they, they still call, they tend to still call them.
But I think one time what happened, just what happened one time is the officer came, the police chief wasn't available, who knew you had, could work. The officers didn't know that and you had to be shut down, right?
Have it on site.
Yeah, they shut us down.
Right, anyway, because no one, you couldn't get anybody.
We should probably do that only if, anytime that we issue an allowance or something like that, if they issue something away so that they have it as well.
Because that's what the police chief asked for.
Exactly. And, you know, they're not going to, how else would they verify that?
I have to try.
If they have something...
Poor Erica, okay, New York or something.
No, if they have something with their letterhead or just...
The police chief sends out an email to follow the police officers, that's it, because they CCs me on it. So I see that go out. I think that one incident was probably the holiday screw up thing on Monday, but...
Is nine to four acceptable for hours?
Like you're nine to five, 4:30, I guess that's as much as you do.
The longer we get, the better we are. We do eight thirty to four thirty?
I mean, that gives you more to do.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we allow Saturday construction at Key, Keys Farms on Saturday, December 1st between the hours of eight thirty and four thirty.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now the, I guess, what, three day extension? Or just, uh...
Extension for paving up through Monday?
For Monday, it's all set up for Monday, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what's, what's Monday's date again?
December 13th.
Is there any chance it could be Tuesday? I'd hate for you to...
The weather, you know, the weather gets cold, it gets cold. We're, we're, we're making it up.
Literally, Tuesday dropped to 34 degrees. You can't do it Tuesday, so...
I mean, my paver is just on my, like, he's doing it, so...
Um, I'll make a motion to extend the paving to, we'll say, December 4th.
Thank you.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, guys.
See you tomorrow.
Okay.
Next up, 147 Long Hill. Okay, I am, excuse myself. See you later, Mike. We have a quorum. Don't have, don't have applicants, but doesn't matter. Um, so to summarize all that's happening, uh, the applicant pretty much says he's done. Erica and Fred went out there and, um, went through the list and they found some things that weren't done. Your butters have a list of things that aren't done. Um, we have a question to town council on how we can, uh, pull a bond, which we're still waiting to hear back from that, so, you know, the actual process of how you legally can take the bond.
I've never gone through that process before. I want to make sure we do it right.
Currently the bond, I think we hold is 28,000?
It is, um, it's in your pocket. It's 29,111 dollars in my account. And I confirm that this makes up the bank, so...
So as of, when I talked to Erica earlier, you didn't have the bond estimate put as this the most recent or is this the old one?
That was the, the one from, um, December 2nd and September 2nd, we reduced the original bond.
Okay.
So this was really just to give you a sense of what, how the work was broken down in the estimate. And if we go through Fred Hamaway's most recent report, we can kind of see what money we have remaining for those items.
Can I ask a question before we get to the bond amount? So looking at the response letter that was issued?
Yes.
Um, has Fred had a chance to look at these responses? Have you had a chance to look at the, I'm like, I thought, all of a sudden, I'm losing it too. Um, have you had a chance to look at these responses and I guess what are your thoughts?
I don't agree with most of them.
Okay, because it's a...
And then some of them, they have, and what happened is some of them, my last letter was July 17th, I want it, my report that I want tonight, today. So what happens is if I have a comment in there in, let's say, July 17th, it, I went out and it was taken care of, it's noted it's taken care of July 17th as of that date. It's not taken off till the next one, which is today.
Okay, okay.
So some of these have been done, but it was still on the report because he looked at a report from four months ago.
Okay, okay.
And, but I hadn't seen it anyways until today.
Okay.
And Erica and I were out there and I wrote, and just so, I wrote the report, we didn't get back to whatever, five o'clock, and I was trying to answer everything in, in my report. I was going to write a response to all this, but I didn't have time.
Okay.
His letter, but basically his letter is itemized as my report. So the answers are there, so to speak, but I, I might have made a mistake, so we have to clarify again.
So if, if something was complete, you just dropped it off your report?
Not off, it's not off. It'd be, said it's done dated today.
Okay.
And then next report, it'd be off completely.
I got it, I got it.
I still want, as, my, today's report responds to things that are on there from the past report.
Yes, you want to walk through this?
Um, before we do that, the, the matter of the fine per day, the 300 per day, so is that, do you have a total of that?
I know, that's through my hair, building inspector, so I, I'll talk to Mike next week and get a sense of where he's at with that. Um, I don't know about the, just play about that.
Uh, regardless, I know that the butters were wondering if we could use that money for repairs, but it just goes to the general fund.
Yeah, I talked to our county council about that. You said no.
Yeah. Okay, so you want to go through the report?
And so you really, I don't know if you have report, we put 24 in front of you?
Yes.
Do you have 23 also?
23 should be in the pack if I don't have a lot of chance, hopefully.
Okay, that's right, it'd be there. So 20, so his letter responds to 23, as you know.
Yep.
Yeah, he's got 23 here, yeah.
So on 24, I might have taken something off that was already completed as of 23, so I might not correlate it to that, but as long as you have 23 in the back of his.
Yep.
So I think the best way might be to go through his.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Because that's a more complete list.
Um, that's the 20, that's the report 23. Based on 23. And so some of 20, some of 24, 24 does not have all of 23 items that were completed as of that.
Was there anything new added on 24? We can talk about that after.
Uh, not really added, no.
Okay, all right.
No.
All right, he has to go through this.
Yeah, let's, if we go through that.
So his first thing in the, under general, and he used the same subtitles or categories as I have in mind. So the first one was about the pavement, I'm sorry, about the general fill placed over the wall, uh, over the footing of the wall. This is the backside of the wall, if you're familiar with it, is in the low point of the driveway on the right as you drive in, this guardrail on the wall. I had questioned that fill material from back, um, a year ago or so, back, I lost my number. Anyways, he got a letter from his structural engineer, the wall designer, who supposedly went out there and, I don't know if you recall that?
I do remember that.
And said it's all adequate and so forth.
So...
And that's, that's his licensed engineer saying that, um, that we have to go by right now.
In your, in your opinion?
My opinion?
Yeah.
It's...
It wasn't GZA, wasn't it?
No, it was, the name is Ronald, Ronald, Close, right? I don't know the firm or...
Oh, oh, sorry. I'm supposed to...
But my opinion, um, back then, the reason why I wrote it was I didn't think there was enough fill over the footings for frost issues, for coverage of frost and there's some of the fill, the, the fill contained, it wasn't clean fill. It contained roots or stones or whatever in it. And I believe I said that.
That's another comment. That's another comment.
Yeah, that's the same one. There's report 23 now on the bottom of it.
Yeah.
It's not clean filled, there are roots, grass and other materials mixed in. Also was placed over the silt fence, which is not acceptable, so silt fence was beyond that.
Wait, so where'd you jump to?
Uh, um, report 23, which is the caption to his letter. And that's what he's responding to, report 23. Ends up being three, three documents we have to go back and forth on.
So what, the letter that was submitted, that covered those concerns?
Yep. It's, um, the wall designer saying it was, it's all acceptable. I don't know what weight it carries overall if something happens, but...
So then on report 24, you...
I had taken it out because on report 23, the second page, they said the letter from Ron Close states that everything was adequate.
So you go with that? Oh, so that's why there's no general on 24?
Correct, on, right. You see, that's the, yeah, sky system, I guess, well. So that's that. On the next one, Batuman's pavement, um, the pavement was done on, on 12/5 last year and I had said it should have been observed after the winter season of any deterioration and so forth. There was a light mist on the last 300 feet as you came up from the end of the driveway up towards Long Hill Road. So nothing's deteriorated from that standpoint. There's no small issue on the pavement, but not because of the placement of it, the installation of it. Okay, it's still solid, not cracking and not waving and not settling or anything like that. So on 24, that's been taken, taken off. Now what he has said, he has basically said the same thing. He has quoted my report in his response.
So then that's been addressed?
Correct.
Okay.
Under drainage, the first one is a flare end section and rip wrap on stormwater management area one.
Can I just ask you something? Sorry. On, so on Batuman, Batuman's pavement on 24, you have left it in. You have like...
You closed it out.
I know, but is this a new item then?
Uh, whatever you did. I'm sorry, like I said, it, oh, you know, I, I went down because there's other Batuman's pavement issues, so I went down to there to make, when I got down there, I went back and took this out. I held it there because there's, further in the, uh, report, there's Batuman's pavement I held it there because there's further in the, uh, report, there's Batuman's pavement issues not related to this.
Okay.
And I never went back, like I said, I was doing it, trying to, I canceled what I was doing tonight.
So it's not this issue?
Decided to do this report, and.
Okay.
So I, but I.
So it's not this issue?
Right, so it's, it should have been out, I'm sorry.
So you're good with that one then?
Right. So on the drainage, flare end section, um, and rip wrap on, um, storm, stormwater area and area number one. The flare end section is in, the rip wrap is in, there's a couple of pieces of rip wrap sitting in the flare end. Two big stones, actually, eight, twelve inch, ten inch stones that are sitting in the flare end. And that's what's said on report.
Yep, it is, yep.
Report twenty-four.
Drainage one, yep.
Okay.
Can I ask one question, or should I wait till you come? It's about that, so.
Can I ask a question?
Um.
Might be better to do that, but.
Oh, sorry, I'm Lauren Sully, um, from one forty-seven Long Hill Road. Um, we were a little, they finally put that last piece in, it had been sitting on the berm for a while now that's in. To me, it looked like they put those stones on because when they originally put it on without the stones, it was like tilted. So it looks like they just put the stones on it so that it isn't tilted.
To hold it in place.
The load bearing stones. It was any luck.
I see what you're saying.
So it wasn't.
Is it, is it draining, the, I mean, the way it's supposed to work is you have your flare end come out, you have your stones, and then it goes, continues to go this way.
Right, no, they're holding it down because it was angled.
The rip wrap, I said, is in the flare end section, she's saying it was put in there to hold it in place.
Because.
Hold the flare end of pavement.
But with it holding it in place, I'm just wondering, is it actually working, or is it still running and working?
We call it working, but it's still, there are two big stones in the small, in this wide event, flare end.
So then you need to excavate out.
Simple.
It just wasn't.
Regardless, this should be out.
You don't need to get excavated.
No, just go in and with her hand, and I could have taken out, and she could have taken out.
No, but if they take those stones out, is that.
Well, then, if that happens, then he's better to do what you just said.
That's what I'm just saying.
Oh, excavate and fix that, yeah.
So it needs to.
So if that's, and I understand now what you're saying, that's probably the reason why they're there, go, but now they mention it.
So that's still in your report, is incomplete?
Correct, but for a different reason.
Well, you were just saying remove it, but this might be worse than that.
When they, when they remove it, and then I look at it, I should, unless they fix it, it should happen, should show what she's saying.
So what's your first name again?
Lauren.
So it should show what Lauren's saying, and then we can go from there. Okay, uh, the second one on his letter, um, was the, uh, flare end and rip wrap is not installed on stormwater management area two, he says it's been done, neither one is there. And we have a picture with that, that Erica has. I give it, right, yeah, I'm open, okay. Third one is debris around the stormwater management area. Um, for the most part, it's been cleaned up, there's still a paint can laying there, there's still some stakes sticking out of the ground, it has nothing to do with the silt fence. Minor stuff, but in the realm of the whole thing, it isn't done. Okay. Four is talking about the swale. I don't know how to explain, the swale is, the swale crosses, it was a two-foot wide bottom and two to one, three to one slope coming off of the road, and two to one slope going back up to lots, what would you have lots be, two and three?
Four, three.
Three.
You have three, and so two and three, Susan, and yours?
Oh, yeah, yep.
So, um, I don't, she can verify it too, Erica, it's not two feet wide, right down the bottom. It's not much of a swale, what did you call it?
I think it's more like a little ditch.
What I think happened is, when you build a swale, you have to dig down and, um, to the sub base and put the material. If you build a sub base to the two feet wide and the slopes, then you put the material on it, and they come down, you don't have the same.
Especially if you have like four.
You have to build it bigger.
And stuff like that.
Right, you have to build it bigger to start with. And I, and this has been a comment from, the swale's been a comment from a year ago, when they were do, when they were digging it out. Let me say one more thing before I go much further. Every one of these things, and I've walked with him twice with Walter, and he has not debated them until the letter.
Until his attorney.
The other day.
Answered this.
So he stands functioning as it should?
No, so in some places, in front of your house, no. And more in front of Susan's house, lot two, there's standing water, it's not graded well, and it has high points, I want to call it, like dams in it, if you want to call it that. It's not graded right down.
And it has like a high point to it, so kind of, doesn't, like, it should run all the way down to the basin, and it doesn't because there's this high point.
So the swale is on the side of the road, or is it, is it for, for conveyance, for runoff from the road?
On these small part of the road, the first, down to the culvert and just beyond it has curved, the rest of it is runoff to the swales.
And so it's, and where is it not working?
Um, as you come up the road past the first.
I have a plan.
I need to go, I just, I worked.
Rather than have you say.
You can show, you know, where it is roughly.
Okay, the driveway here, so this section of the road, like the curbing.
Okay.
And, um, the, the curbs in here, hydrating this way, and then you come up to this side, and there's no more curbing, and then there's a swale that comes down here. So there's a break here, and then this swale goes down and drains in here.
And then it goes under the culvert.
Somewhere, there'll be two equal, um, somewhere in here, there's like, there's just material and a high point, and so you have ponding now in this area here. And then this kind of rains this way.
Okay.
Okay, now also in that swale, I don't know if I wrote it in there from way back, but there's a, a good tire imprint trap in front of that swale. That's well off the road, that's been there for a long time. It's not well after, that's, and been there well before he ever came, he ever stated, a UPS truck, a garbage truck, whatever was creating the ruts. That was in there from back before he even seeded it. So that swale is also, that tire rut is also just collecting water, too.
How big of a tire rut?
It's a very, it's very big.
It's, it's deep. I mean, it was long that they ran over in a wet time period. I mean, you're talking, I don't know, at least five feet off the edge of the road, in that area? Not, not the tire rust that, we're going to talk about what you write on the edge.
Um, well, before we move to Lomond Seed on drainage, from the Butters' leg, did you see their letter from the Butters? They have, they have pictures of water running across.
You guys wrote one, right?
Yeah, I have one.
I wrote, I read that, I just got that today.
Well, they, they have pictures, they have pictures of, uh, water running across the road instead of, you know, running down the side to the drain.
Is that?
It's this, right?
A little before the culvert? So I have a picture of that, I never saw it, you told me about that way back, and I believe you might, you, I don't think I saw a picture of water, I think I saw a picture of the staining of it, right? But, but I took a picture today, you took.
Yep, yep, I got it.
And, um, and that shows it, so it shows.
You're on the last page.
Do they have those pictures?
They, and, there's one, right?
Yeah.
There's a picture of the water looking up towards Long Hill Road, and the water's running from right to the left in the picture.
Yeah, it's crossing the road.
Yeah, what that shows is that, that the, um, pavement's not crowned. It's cross pitched, it's crossed in, and it's coming off, it's just not.
It was, it was supposed to have.
Crowned.
Did it, did it change?
On all the way where the curving is, from all the way through the culvert and a little bit up.
Further up, we switched it.
Further up, there's cross slope all the way to the left.
But on this section, it should be crowned, it was not.
Yeah, you should get berm on both sides, right?
Correct. Now, if you look, you can see where that water's coming from, which is not the road, this isn't rainwater, this is coming off the earth on the right side, the bare earth area.
Okay.
So it's like breaking out there.
Yep.
This isn't water just coming down from their, from their house over the tire.
But it should.
But regardless, it still goes across.
It should, it should hit the curb.
And stay on the curb.
And stay on the curb.
You want it in the gutter.
Otherwise, they're going to have serious ice issues.
Right, and it's only, you can, just a sheen, and what happens if you do or don't know how this is playing, so, what happens in, let's say it's snow on the, um, middle of winter, and it's warm during the day, you're going to get that sheen, and everybody coming home at four or five o'clock, it's already dark, and then you get the frozen.
Ice.
Just a little black ice. Whether or not it's going to be hazardous, it still shouldn't be there, but, um, so when it's melted and running, no one's really using the road as much.
So is it?
The majority of people.
So from Long.
Are going to work or something at home.
So from Long Hill Road, all the way to the end of the curving, it should be crowned?
Yes, which goes.
Is it crowned anywhere there, or?
Um, it's, you, it's hard to see, you're talking about six feet wide.
Yep.
And it's, it's hard enough to see on a road that's thirty feet wide, never mind twelve feet wide, which is six feet each side.
Well, but what's it supposed to, the crowning's like just a few inches?
Right, it's, um, two percent, so it's, um, it's only.
Yeah, it's like.
Two inches over the, over that width.
It's usually have a two percent.
But you can see it, it, it doesn't happen anyplace but there, correct, so there it's not crowned.
So should that be added to your report to fix the crowning, or?
And, and I didn't, yes, I, I guess, yeah.
I mean, cause it's not built to, plan, right?
Today was the first, I heard about it, today was the first I saw it.
I mean, if it's only two inches and it's so much water coming through that.
Where, where exactly is this on the plan?
Um, just the, let me see, oh, there's the culvert, it's lot one, so it's, so I'm standing here taking the picture, and right, you can almost see this in the picture, you can see the, um, the turnout.
Is that, is that the turnout right there?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's the, so it's right where the garden, so it's like right here, right?
No, see, that's not the picture, where's my, where's the picture?
You can see the, you can see the turnout right there.
I haven't been.
Oh, sorry, okay, yeah.
That's the turnout right there.
Right, that's the turnout.
Yeah, so it looks like it's right where the garden, so.
Well, he's taking the picture from here, this, the turnout.
Right.
So it's, it's like.
The water's like here, yeah.
The picture I took today is a much, see how narrow that is?
Yeah.
It's.
It's much bigger.
At least twice that with, um, down, down the profile of the road.
I mean, it sounds like it's going to be an issue, so.
Was there, um, is there ever an asphalt?
There will, it hasn't been done.
Hasn't been done.
The chairman and us are supposedly preparing it right now, so.
Now, in.
So they can change the asphalt, say that.
In defense of them, you, in order to show that, you need a lot of detailed information that might not be gotten in an normal situation.
But usually, I mean, what I'm saying is, we know that this is a problem area, so we should ask for additional survey spots right along this area to.
Or once they do it, then I go back, I say, I need to see that.
Either, either.
But initially, you might not see, you might not.
No, and if we know, because we know it's a problem area, we can ask, and then you can understand maybe the extent of where the, it needs to be replaced.
Right.
Um, but, or if they want to just go ahead and try to, they put a smart level on it, figure out where the crown looks.
I mean, the fact is, it's not there.
Yeah.
There's no two ways about it, the best thing is the water to, to determine it.
So we want to add a drainage issue number five, is that?
Maybe what crowning's not proper?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out, where, so you could describe the, are there station, yeah, there is a station right, roughly between station four.
I'd say it's right here.
Right there, so that's three, three plus twenty-five, roughly. And the extent is just unknown.
Correct, I'd say it's about twenty-five feet in length alone, but.
How do you fix that, you have to dig it up, you do it, right?
Well, yes, because you can't just add pavement at one moment.
Stay.
Yeah, one at a year.
No, they should dig a.
Since we're talking about something, it might, um, there's another item further down that maybe we should discuss right now, and that is, there's a man, where the two catch basins are, they connect into a manhole.
These two were seen right here in the picture?
Correct, yeah. And when the binder, this is not unusual, when the binder pavement was put down, the manhole was just covered over. That, that's not unusual, when the binder was, what happened was, everybody thought about it, and the top coat got put over.
And he, but he did acknowledge that, that he needs that.
What I'm getting at is, it might be, you're talking, well, no, it's further down, I don't know. It, he'd have to determine what, to what extent, but it could be, he has to go that far down already, that's going to be hard to, not hard.
And he could just cut up square.
Patch it in with an infrared patching, it, you can't just, and right now, it's not going to be able to do it, for next year, again. But we had talked about it in the training sometime.
I mean, it would be good if it included in the limits of within the crown, so it's all.
That's what I mean, it might, it might come out to that.
No, I, I think that would be beneficial if it was all one, one piece of pavement that was done, and it's not missing.
It's not as close as I thought, but.
So, I mean, how do you, how does, how does this happen, cause he hired a contractor, right, to pave, and so the paver didn't follow the plan, or the paver just did a bad job, I mean, he wasn't paving.
But he's the applicant.
Yeah, right, well, I'm not saying he's off the hook, I'm just saying.
How does it happen?
He doesn't manage it properly, or?
Just like sometimes catch basins, uh, instead of this, they turn that way, because they weren't thinking when they set them, and then it's too late, and then the other curb, you have to see a curb that goes all around a catch basin back in because it, the catch basin is another foot beyond where it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
You see it? Well, as it happened, it shouldn't happen.
Yeah, okay.
Matter of fact, he's found what's funny, he said, what are you measuring, I'm sort of measuring the catch basin, and they should have it twenty-two feet before we start paving. So what for? I said, just in case. Might as well get it down, it's got to happen, because I seen it happen, and doing you a favor.
Yeah. It's like when you check your formers.
Ah, right.
That sucks.
So it's kind of funny.
Brandon, do you want to mention the catch basin?
Um, I would love to, we want to do the flushing part.
Oh, okay.
Is that in the report?
Yeah, um, no, but I can mention it.
If it's in a.
It's in the, it is not even there, I have to elaborate on it, as you say.
Alright, so.
Okay. I just mentioned that one, which is further along one because it might coincide.
Yep.
Uh, do you want to go to Lomond Seed then?
Sure.
Okay, Lomond Seed, who the heck knows what, what's good, bad, and different, who owns it, who, how much they've tried, but there's a lot of areas that are there, or very little vegetation on them.
Now, isn't there, um, I mean, typically with landscaping stuff, there's a, um, what do you want to call it? Uh, like a two-year or one-year warranty, so if it's not, like, and usually it's like seventy-five percent, so if less than seventy-five percent is existing or established, then they have to, um, come back and pay to reestablish it, um, and, and then it's another year, um, that was, I mean, that's typically.
That's typical, but it's not written anyplace, I don't think.
Oh, okay.
Like in the decision or anything like that.
It, was it on any of the plans?
Um, the problem we have in though is, he's now saying, I don't own any of this, it's not mine, that's what he's saying in his, in his responses.
But, but the seventy-five percent establishment, it was never established within the year.
That's my point.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I get that he's after the year.
Because he's saying, and they can vouch this, he's saying in his thing, I put it in, they should have taken care of it, they didn't take care of it.
No, he has a year.
I know that, but, um, but he's, his, there's no, he's done it so many times, it hasn't, there's no, um.
Reports, I remember.
No, uh, reports on progress of what's happened, the bottom line is, it's, it's been written, or looked at many times, and still never done, so that's a, that shows that it wasn't done to that extent.
Established, yeah.
Established to that extent, seventy-five percent or whatever.
Right, I mean, he's saying, well, yeah, you're saying, well, he did it, but if it never grew, and he didn't.
He's saying it's not his fault because he doesn't own it anymore, and the people who own it.
But he, but he never supplied grass, so, he never supplied.
No, he split seed.
It's just it got washed away.
It got washed away, they, it wasn't adequate, didn't get raked in, who knows the reasons why.
Well, but on the plans, it doesn't show seed, it shows grass, right, doesn't he have to like?
Yeah.
Give it last.
That's what you can do, is I think the seed grows and.
No, he's saying.
But if it gets washed away before it ever grew, he never actually gave it.
Exactly. Well, he did, but yeah, if it gets washed away, he has to replace it.
Right, his commitment is to have grass there, not to just throw seed.
Not to throw seed.
Yeah.
And a year, and that's why a lot of it's the next, it's too growing.
And that's why when you have a horrible rainy season like that, I mean, a lot of times you'll see contractors, they'll, they'll use a matting, erosion control matting, and something that would keep some sort of seed in place that, you know, won't get washed away.
No, he did put down straw, lots of straw down, I was telling them that. Maybe it wasn't done right, maybe it wasn't spread out enough, maybe it was in clumps.
I mean, bottom line is nothing was established.
It doesn't matter what he did, it doesn't matter how he did it, it isn't there.
Yep, okay.
So that's number one, number two.
Can I make a quick comment? Sure, Kevin Saline, one five one, Long Hill Road. He did put some straw down when he first seeded some areas, but, you know, when they filled in along the sides of the common drive after they paved, they just threw down dirt with rocks in it, and didn't seed it right away, and didn't put any hay on it, that's why it all roared it out, and it's all muddy mess along the edges.
Yeah, so there was hay, and then dirt on top of the hay, they never.
They just threw the dirt on top of the hay and the grass.
It's all been backwards, and then they've tried doing it at least three, four times, right before it rains, or when it's freezing out, or at every worst possible time, and like I said in my letter, we were so sick of looking at this ugly mess that we did it in little strip in front of our, I think we did it ourselves, we went to a depot, took us an hour, the grass grew. Like, you know, it's possible, it wasn't hard.
Never, yeah.
And in the summer, it's completely compacted down and dry, and you had guys walking around putting seed down, but it's like putting seed down on the road.
Scarefied enough so the seed grabs.
I mean, and the pictures I sent in the last letter, there's like a clump of seed in a muddy puddle, and it wasn't, I mean, you can't say that's how you seed something.
Okay. Moving on.
Before we go any further, I mean, last post July, whatever, since then, there's been many emails to Walter, many, many, America, responses of both those saying that they've touched me when he's going to do this work. All the things he said now are done, he never told me and never let me know. As a matter of fact, I went out there on my own, I'd say two more times during the summer, and nothing had changed, and then more recently, the past month, maybe? He's done work, but he never called, doesn't let anybody know.
Okay.
Um, on the second one, grading, the driveways, rock street grade to allow the flow of water to come down and not be interrupted to get down, but both those driveways drain to the common driveway first of all, from a grid pitch, so they drain down to come right up. But the, at the time I wrote this, and now a year ago, once again, that it wasn't graded, um, well, uh, just hadn't been smoothed out, things like that, right? At that point, and so there was really no way for the water to flow freely. It's been graded, but now it seems like there's, especially on lot, um, three, which is now one fifty-one.
Right.
Um, it's more of a. Um, it's more of a, it comes down to a low area before it hits the driveway, so it's, and it has washed out whatever, it's more of a gra, uh, uh, earth, bare earth, uh, area. This is on both sides of the driveway, um, on that particular driveway, thinking, that's almost not near the high point, but it sort of flows in both directions, um, for the color that goes under the driveway. But bottom line is, it's, it should be taken care of. Now, I did look at something, Erica, you had mentioned when we were out there, she's saying, well, maybe we should look at that he owns what's in the easement. Well, the easement itself goes, I don't know, twenty feet onto the, theoretically onto your lots, by ten, it's well over around. Here's your easement line, for instance, at that line, here's your edge of pavings by twenty feet, the easement.
Okay.
So there's a lot, you can look at that as the right of way.
Yeah.
And that he owns, because Erica's saying, what does he own, right? Do you own their front yards?
No, yeah, yeah, yeah.
He does to that person, but not to the, not, not to the, um, common driveway property. So I guess if we look at the easement, that's probably a good defining line on what should be under this, uh, the planting board's per view.
Okay.
Okay? So that's another one of the issues, okay. Um, number three is.
It's number two you said.
Number two is done then.
No, no.
You said it, you said this appears to be completed.
It appears, but, um, it's, I had written it before, I then looked and saw this, if we use the, uh, easement line as his limit of what he, what he owns, then I think it has to still be done. That makes sense?
So you're taking this comment out then?
It's revised to a sense.
Yeah, I paused, I tried to get this done in time.
That's okay, this is a nice draft version, you look at it as a draft version.
And I didn't go back and prove it, I, I.
That's fine.
And I want to.
So that one's still open?
Yeah, so it just needs to be revised to a sense of the easement line.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we agree right here that he should own everything in the easement, and I think he should.
Okay, three?
Okay, um, Loeman, it's right on Loeman behind the cake called burn. Uh, let me go back to stuff. When we were out there, Erica and I, Erica was trying to say, what is, what was the term used, um, as far as some minor things, they said we should maybe.
Priorities?
Priorities. Um, the, the, the burn itself comes up, and the earth should be right to it, the grass, and it's a little lower. And some place, and then, and, but it's not bad, so it's not, if that was the only thing on this project, we'd say, I would say, accept the whole thing. If we were going to get every little inch that should be one-hundred percent perfect, then we should keep it in here. They can put another inch. Will that help anything? Might hinder. At least there's some grass behind that, those things, you know, it does not bear as compared to the one we had to pay when there's no burn.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with you leaving it in here, and we'll see what gets addressed, I mean, I can say that's.
Do you want to update that, number three, and twenty-four, just to say that?
You say these areas ought to be seeded in the spring?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't even, um, I didn't even comment on today's method, I missed that one.
I'll just add comment.
Yeah, I didn't comment on that, sorry.
So that'll be number four?
No, that's.
No, so he just needs to add a comment.
Oh, oh, number three.
The comment was from two thousand seventeen, so it just needs to add a, uh, eighteen comment.
Okay. On the plantings, once again, let's just jump back to him for a second. Uh, he has said all those things we've been talking about, um, I mentioned David, okay? On the plantings, once again, I'll just say, he says the plant type install, install, oh, if you read his plantings comment, he starts about plantings, and goes right into, stops my sentence of plantings, and jumps into guardrails, which is the next section on the report twenty-three, that's why it doesn't sound right.
Okay.
So he never finished talking about plantings, he, his copy pasted something new, and, and God missed out. So what, let's talk about the plantings on his comment. Um, it just says, plantings installed prior to inspection, the next sentence is a whole nother.
Okay, yes, guardrail, gotcha.
Okay, so the plantings were installed prior to the inspection, and I wrote back on twenty-three, twenty-three or twenty-four, doesn't matter, and I don't have knowledge of plant types, and there are a large number of plants, but he did submit a letter, do you remember that from the installer saying, what plants are installed, the number each plant? And they said, that letter from his nursery said everything's installed. Well, the fact remains, behind this, this wall, this, the plantings, and there's no doubt in my mind, but I know I can look, there's nothing there back a year ago. So the letter said everything was done according to the plans, but there was definitely nothing. As of today, even this summer, there was, as of today, um, and Erica knows, I thought it was, um, scrub stuff, but there were little tags, and then there was two sets of buckets, maybe three or four buckets each.
Empty, yes.
Empty ones laying there. So they did put that in, but definitely not. I, I don't know when. Now, my response, their pre-response on twenty-four, I think said to, we have to wait a year.
Here's what the plans were, some of the.
Yeah, spring, the spring of two thousand nineteen is sure, so we will. So I think we have to wait for that, that's almost similar to what we should be talking about when you talk about the world proceeding.
Okay.
And, um, one comment about that. So there were several plants on the other side of the driveway that had died, because they put them in late November last year, and they never took. So he's saying they're all done, but those are still dead plants in there that have never.
That's on the left side of the drive, or the right?
The left.
Left side.
Because the ones he just put in on the right side were put in in October, November, when, maybe September, when he was working on the wetlands replication area. So those are fairly new, um, but he's still never replaced the ones that were dead.
And they took out between the wetlands in stormwater management area one, is a burn that you can sort of drive on, walk on. He, he had to take out those plants to go do the wetland work, replication work, which is under the conservation's purview. And he put those off to the side, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, well.
And then he replanted them.
After they were out in the cold for three weeks.
So that goes along, I'm not just saying the plants, I'm saying all the plants should be verified for the year.
Yes, even the ones he did dig up, though, there are still ones, now you can't tell, because it's winter.
Right, so I think all of them have to be covered, not just the ones that just got put in.
Right, so I might reword this.
Because I never saw any of them that looked healthy, at, at all. But then again, when I saw them, they, he put them, even last year, he put them in outside of growing, outside of planting season.
It was the end of November.
Right.
Which is, yeah. I would just maybe reword this to, to know that all plants should be inspected in the spring, um, to address.
And I do have pictures from the spring.
Well, that's what I'm saying here, some of the plants were removed and replaced through the work around stormwater, the plants, okay, but all.
Yeah, but I would just say, yeah, it just makes it clear that it's all.
That's what it meant to me.
Exactly, and then it's.
Yeah, there's, there's still a lot, so maybe just, let's go faster, or, um, or understand what we want to do, next steps.
Yeah, I mean, if we could just go, yeah, a little bit faster, faster, because.
Well, there's still like three pages of comments, so rather than maybe going through one by one, do we want to just?
I mean, clearly, you know, there's no bond getting given back, and there's plenty of work here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, maybe we could just hit some of the, um, the sort of priority.
Yeah, that would be good.
Issues that are.
Which one, one good thing.
The ones that I, when we were out there, that I were thinking, that I was thinking were priority, were the fact that the catch basins are completely full of water, um, the pipes haven't been flushed, and it's basically, we think that the, basically the water in the basin is kind of coming back into the, into the catch basin.
Have they been, um, cleaned?
They said they have.
They said, oh, my, but you can't tell.
It's a pretty careful when you're out there.
This file, this picture, this file below the, right, it's well above.
And while you can see the water coming in.
In the catch basin. In one of them, it's coming back from that manhole that's buried, you can see it, and there's a video of it that, that they don't have yet.
Is that?
I haven't seen it yet.
Is that associated with any of these numbers?
Yes, uh, it'd be under, uh, it, it, I left in number fourteen on page four of Ryan's, but on the inspection.
Washed by undercoats.
So I just left in there, that is, oh, sorry, uh, no, that's that one, uh. That was like the number one, that, that just run the flushing the whole system.
And whose responsibility is maintaining that? It's not, that's not the talent, right?
No, it's all the.
AJOA or something.
Yeah, but they should be given it, you know.
Proper working order, when they hand it over.
Typically during construction, there are some that can get into the pipes and catch basins, and usually the contractor, the varian cleans all that out, flushes it, and then turns it over, and then it becomes whoever's responsible for that.
Is there any documentation on any of that, any of the flushing updates, usually?
And?
When they flush, when they, you know, is it something that's a third party, or do they do it themselves, or?
To date, be in the contract?
Yeah, I can, I can say, yeah, I flushed those out two weeks ago, and, you know.
I mean, they, they, it's usually, usually a third party has a, um, a water truck, a pressurized water truck.
Right, so is there any documentation on, did they, did they do that with this?
I don't, I don't have document, I, excuse me, a bill from that, I, I don't have that, only that they said they've done it. I don't recall, I can't find where it says it completely, but it's part of, it's been talked to numerous times.
So on his comment.
That has to be done, but which one are you looking at then?
On his comment under the home along the edges, the common driveways in repair, and he's saying that the tire rods and erosion, you know, it's, the applicant doesn't own it anymore, the roadway's owned by the landowners, but it hasn't, there's no as-built, and it hasn't been turned over, so it's still his responsibility, right?
Yeah, the way I look at it, he, he does not own anything, correct. He sold everything off to everyone.
Oh, those old lots, yeah.
Right, the whole thing, he doesn't own anything.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
And legally or anything, am I correct?
Well, in my understanding, he's still responsible for the driveway stuff, but I.
But does he own it? You guys own it. I think he, the way I read this, he's saying, I think personally, he's waited and put it off, put it off until he got rid of all the lots, and now he's saying, I don't own any.
But we've owned them for years.
But I think, yes.
The common driveway, right?
He's claiming that he doesn't own it, because now he's finished all the lots.
Correct, and he sold the last house.
Yes.
That's what I think, I, it seems like all of this came, this whole letter came after he completely sold.
Yeah.
So that's how I'm looking at it. Now he's saying, and you can see it, he says, I don't own this, I'm not responsible.
Right.
And I understand what he's saying, but how do you, because as Erica says today, something has to be better in the, possibly, like anything else in the regulations about, like a town road, a sub-throw, they can't get it accepted until all this thing's done. There's no one accepting this.
Right.
Because it's a common.
So the developer, Century Mill will own that road until it gets accepted.
Yeah.
And you can hold them.
You can hold them accountable, this one.
So in the future, common driveways, maybe we need this part, we need to have like an acceptance bond or something like that, is that it?
But that is what this is, right?
We are.
Right, he's still.
We have a bond, I mean, that's what it's, that's basically, it's just sealed down.
But his argument, is what I'm saying, has nothing to do with anything, except he says, I don't know, I don't have any.
But, but legally, I mean.
But to, to actually, like, make him build the road and finish it, we probably just have to hold the last lot. We do that now, and then, once he gets to that last, last lot, he posts cash bond, tri-party agreement, something that sort of replaces the last lot. But, um, now, like Fred is saying, he's, you know, no longer actually owns anything out there, so he's less obligated to.
Well, that, that's what I was going to ask, is there any, other than we've got a bond, but, um, there's, there's no other recourse to relieve?
I, that's a question for town council. I mean, he still has a special department, it's still outstanding, um, he's the applicant. He's required to finish the work for the tri-party agreement, when you read it, I mean, he's obligated to finish the work that's on the plan.
So.
It might be worth, uh, conversation.
I think the recourse is taking the bond.
Um, and, and there was, is there a font?
So, can we go over quickly your bond estimate? That's, uh, I guess it's old now, but.
And I haven't, you've looked at, so it's, I think it's a year old, isn't it?
Yeah.
How did I do that?
What's that?
Uh, I'm just going to make stuff more clear, just. So, I guess, so what I was asking Erica, if you could do, like, for all these things that we stay open, some of it's tough, you know, to make an estimate on, but. I guess what I want to know is if we're above twenty-nine thousand, which, with, if we add the crowning of the road, and I assume, that's a big ticket item.
Like you have a fifty percent increase to make to twenty-nine thousand.
Well, we're at, yeah.
Yeah, but we never included the crowning of the road.
I know that, but what's the fifty percent for?
Inflation?
Yeah.
Boy.
We hope I get a raise.
Yeah, but inflation.
Pain and suffering.
Pain, but I mean, he's saying, it, it's, like, um.
You tend to put a contingency.
Fifty percent's a high contingency at this, at this stage, so we missed that, I, I missed it, or whatever, but we have, we have this contingency of ten thousand dollars, nine thousand dollars. So if that's the only thing I missed, that should cover it.
Well, how much?
Thirty thousand dollars.
Like, how much, uh, when your feet are, you know, road?
It's only about, I'd say fifty by the time you start to blend it back.
And how much does it cost to replace fifty feet of road?
The square, yeah, it's about sixteen dollars, twelve, twelve dollars a square yard, so it'd be, um.
Twelve feet across.
Fifteen times, just fifty times ten, so five, about five hundred square feet, divided by nine or ten is fifty square yards, so it's, it covers it.
Fifty square yards, so what did you say for a square yard?
It'd be about twelve dollars a square yard.
It might be more than six thousand?
We might have to do the binder, but would it come out to be fifty times fifty?
Yeah.
Twenty-five, I'm sorry, fifty times ten or twelve, um, fifty times ten or twelve, so.
No, fifty square feet, you said.
Fifty square yards, it's ten bucks a square yard, just around the numbers.
That seems cheap, only ten dollars per square yard.
This is, that's just that layer.
You're not, you're not needing to do the sum base, or you can.
So you just, you just needed to like, uh.
Take off the top.
Now, it could be more, because it's a smaller area, but it doesn't twenty.
So it's just that top layer, and they may, yeah, you're right, they may add a little bit more to book back, so you can have a proper crown, but you don't need to go down.
Yeah, and you can reuse the material?
No, 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 they won't, no, they'll reuse it, they grind that out and take it away, so, but, but I mean, the nine thousand, eight thousand, five thousand's going to cover it, I'm getting it.
What's this extra nine thousand you're talking about?
Well, so, we, you know, this, we estimate how much everything will cost, and then we multiply times the factor of one point five in the bond. So what he's saying is that point five extras hopefully will cover what we, this, this new piece.
Hold more in the bond than.
Something has to do with, just to quickly, when you're doing a subdivision road that the town is going to own, if the contractor walked away, the town has to finish it, and they might have to, someone bidding it will probably bid a premium, so it, so it bumps up the prices.
So there was, we, we estimated that there was eighteen thousand five hundred dollars worth of work left, but with the one point five factor, we held on to twenty-nine thousand. So what he's saying is there's some buffer in there. Yeah, so I guess, big picture, Erica's going to, um, kick up, you know, talk to town council to see what the process is, holding the bond. If he's saying he's done, you know, clearly we have to grab, get that money.
I guess that was my question, like, legally, you know, I think we have a different state, difference of opinion based on his response letter, um, so how, how does that get worked out?
That's what town council's going to help us with.
Okay, that would be great.
I honestly do not know the specific.
Yeah, okay.
So if he doesn't agree with our assessment, could it go to court, or?
Even possibly, I don't know, we'll find out, see what.
I think those are all questions.
We'll leave town council to weigh in.
Good, yeah.
So when will, because I've heard this, a lot of these meetings, like, town council will weigh in, like, when is that going to happen?
Hopefully by the next meeting, I just reached out to him this week, so.
Well, but now that we have a response letter from him, there can be any action based off of that.
So the board's in agreement that the bond will be pulled, and someone else will do this work? Because that's, we don't, like, he's not.
I mean, he's saying he's done.
Right, so we, the work that will be done will be done by someone else, because from the, one of the other meetings, it sounds like that process of getting it, putting it out to bid takes a while, and we really want this done in the spring, so.
But I think before we could even pull a bond, we need to go through it legally.
And, uh, I think to add to Lauren's point, um.
Could you just?
Sorry, I'm Megan Foley, from one fifty-three Long Hill. I personally am very concerned about giving Walter the opportunity to come back and fix anything, so I just want to be clear that.
anything, so I just want to be clear that is that still on the table, especially in terms of ripping up a large portion of our driveway? His quality of work is horrible, and it's going downhill, the more he's being pressured.
Is that something we can, we can ask town council for the court today?
I would want to know what the procedure is first, so that way we're not putting the cart before the horse on anything, like, I don't want to put ourselves at liability for anything. So once we get town council's weigh in, then the board can actually take a vote whether or not to pull the bond, and then we can kind of start that, if you guys think that's the direction to go, we can then start to pursue that. I think one thing we should kind of consider is the fact that he is working on the as-bill, I would like to get the as-bill before we tell him we're pulling the bond, because then he's definitely not going to do that. I'd like to have an as-bill.
Yeah.
I mean, that he needs to have.
Well, he's required to do it, right?
Well, he's required for doing a bunch of the stuffs.
Yeah, if we pull the bond.
He's also asking for an extension for that, right?
To do the as-bill?
For a month.
It's a four-week, it's a four-week extension to do the as-bill.
So that way we kind of, we'll have a better sense of something for constructing out.
I mean, there's, there's no downside for not giving an extension, I mean, so he can do the as-bill.
No, and then that way he'll be present at that next meeting.
He has already got an extension from your plus on most items. I, I am not for an extension. And I also just want to make a comment that if it does go into town, that he has represented his family member, so to him, I don't think that would be much of an issue.
I'm sorry, can you, it's his, um-
He goes to court, he's saying his son is his lawyer, so.
His son's his lawyer.
It's not going to like cost him money.
Right. Well, that may, there's nothing we can do.
I know, it's, yeah.
What she's trying, though, is talking to council about the procedure.
I know, and if he goes to that part level, but I really am against an extension of any type, any kind, he's gotten it on pretty much.
Well, but if, you know, if he's doing the as-bill, Erica's saying that, you know, if we don't extend it, then he's just not going to do the as-bill, I mean, don't get it.
What's the purpose of an as-bill at this point?
I think it would, I think it behooves us to have it, and then to give it to any contractor moving forward, saying, okay, this is what has been done. I, don't you think, Fred, it would be helpful to have, to understand the grades out there?
So the as-bill is just pretty much a, kind of like an update, it's like an update to the plan to show what's actually, what actually was built.
Was actually was constructed, but if there's, there's survey, like, they have to take spot shot, you know, final spot shots out there, so you're getting a more realistic plan.
So you were bringing it before, would the as-bill catch the improper crowning?
Yeah, I mean, and that's where, you know, I think-
Even, even the swale size and all that. Now, once again, I think, I'm going to guess that once they get the as-bill, we're going to have to go back and ask some more detail on it for that one part of the swale. You heard me mention about the pipe draining backwards, that might show that the pipe is supposed to be like this and it's tilted that way. The as-bills will show.
Potentially gives a stronger point of the stuff that wasn't designed appropriately, so if he's preparing a plan, it gives, it's a strong, you know, when you compare the as-bill to this, you know, hopefully you'll see a lot of these issues come to light.
Which, that makes sense, I mean, can we say you have two weeks to do it, or, I mean, like, why are we dragging, like, just get them in and do it, like, four weeks is a little excessive.
Well, it's, I don't know how, I mean, it takes a fair amount of time to do the field work and then to process it, so there is, there is some, like, work there, I mean, I don't know what there is, who's doing, you know, who's sharing this stuff.
And I just know they're really busy right now, but what I can do is I'll send Brandon and Walter an email, just kind of outlining what you're saying, like, we would like some additional spot shots here, we would like-
I think, let him know at a time, and see if he could, I mean, I would be, I would be for giving the extension, but saying, we want some specific additional information here, you know, just say we had some concerns and we want to see what it's, looks like, and I think it would be, it would be good to get that plan and compare against the design plan.
Would the extension affect the fines? Is he still being fined per day?
That I'd be followed with Mike, because Mike, Mike was considering whether or not to continue the fines if he had shown progress of work, but I never gave him an update on the progress of work, so I doubt he stopped finding him, but again, that was his decision, not mine, or the board's, so I would just-
I would say he would say that there has not been shown.
And I know Walter was planning to appeal those fines to the board, to the zoning board of appeals anyway.
He's asking for a four-week extension, and I'm assuming we're not having a second meeting in December.
We're not, so it would be either-
Two or six.
It's six, then.
Wait, I'm sorry, we're, say it's what?
So we only are meeting 12 in December.
Which, well then, mm-hmm.
Or then it would be, I don't know, November, December.
January.
Second Wednesday, January.
That's a good point. So just, just here, so if they do, if we say, okay, he's going to get this extension, that's a separate thing, he's not getting extension on everything, it's only for the as-bill. This is totally, all the things we've just discussed are separate topics, and then, so that's one, I guess, clarifying question I have, and then the other one is, what if the as-bill doesn't show some of the things that we're talking about today that are, we're saying are issues? Does it not matter? The as-bill's not going to address everything, because some of them are surface issues that you're seeing, like the erosion, like the grass and stuff like that, it's not, may not necessarily address that. So, but what it would potentially address is, you know, are the pipes draining as they should be, is the swale, are there any, you know, potential high points? Now, there is a certain level of accuracy if they don't survey that little high point, I mean, and that's where we can go out with that as-bill afterwards and say, look, this doesn't look like it matches, or something, I mean, I think there could be a follow-up with the as-bill, you can always do a field check.
Because we have to accept the as-bill, right?
Mm-hmm.
But in these, however many weeks you would give him, we don't want him coming back and trying to do more than that.
No, this, this is an extension just to do the as-bill.
Well, but based on his letter, he says he's done, I mean, he says-
But then he's going to get Fred's report that says X, Y, and Z still need to be done, and then he could show up and rip up the driveway, you know what I mean? Like, we, that's what we're trying to do.
Well, I mean, if he's going to do it, and it's going to be inspected, and if it's proper, then, I understand what you're saying, he's, he does not good work, but-
But also he's lately, ever since July of whatever, he has done work that he has said he would notify me personally, and the town, and he has never notified me at all, and I've got the emails every month, saying as soon as I'm going to be out there, I'll let Fred know ahead of time, and I'm starting myself.
The other option is we try to, I mean, move forward without the as-bill.
He, I mean, he needs to do the as-bill anyway, right? So I don't know why we, I'm reluctant to give him the extension, because I think that's going to affect the fine, and, I mean, we'd be extending this, the common driveway special permit, that's what we'd be extending.
Oh, is that, okay.
We can't, I don't think we can limit it to-
To just a portion of it.
Why is this limited up right now?
It's already, it's crashed, right?
That's what I'm saying, okay.
The, to do the driveway? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the common driveway permit, is, that's expired, right?
Oh, yeah.
So there's no reason we should extend that.
No, well, now we're going to pull the bond, no.
Then I would just say, no, the as-bill needs to be done.
Yeah.
But what keeps him from doing it, take him 10 months to do it?
Well, eventually we're going to have some, I mean-
If he's going to take 10 months and wants a four-year extension.
So what's the recourse if he has something that he's provided us and he never provides it?
It really comes down to the bond, is there money in the bond from the as-bill? It's rainwater, maybe, I guess.
I don't see that.
I mean, there also is the bond that the conservation commission is holding, which I know their priority is doing their stuff, but I know there was talk before of possibly combining.
Well, they also, I mean, usually with, is a wetland replication? I mean, they usually have to do an as-bill for the wetland replication as well, a lot of times, so I mean, that could potentially-
And they have a bond, as you said, for the conservation, from the conservation.
There's 31.
I, I think you're, you're right in the fact that it should be an extension now, I mean, now, just thinking through this and what it is, what potentially-
To say it's due and get it as soon as possible.
Yeah, because it's, it's, it's the whole permit that would potentially be extended, and if we're fining-
We're fining him per day for being a compliance, and he acts as incentive to-
And this, this clearly shows there's multiple items that are non-compliant, and the as-bill's another one of them.
So my direction is to reach out to Walter and say, the planning board needs the as-bill ASAP.
Mm-hmm, and there was no extension granted.
Your pass due, and no, no extension for the as-bill was given.
The fine, the fines continue.
And the fines, well, I'll stop the mic about that.
Yeah, but he, yeah, and he could follow up, and you can let Mike know that we do not feel that there was a good effort per fourth with regard to the work, and I think, I mean, I feel strongly with saying, we think the fine should continue.
I think that he, for the fact that he requested a continuance, I think there should be a vote on it that we turn it down.
But so what is that, I mean, you already have due, what is-
What is he asking for?
It's not like-
To do the as-bill.
But for a week's extension of what?
Continue in what?
Like for today? I mean, what's the date, what is the extension?
To know if it's a one-
Is he asking for a continuance of this?
Yeah.
Six months ago.
Is he asking for a continuance of the special permit?
And that's why I think that would be illegal, meaningful for them to get out of-
I think it's continuance of this meeting.
That's how I understand it.
I think that's, I think that's one of it.
But this isn't, this isn't a public hearing, so we don't have to continue it.
It doesn't matter, just the fact that he was supposed to be here from the meeting here couldn't make it any worse.
But we can continue them until October.
Like Sam, so if we continue this, and he's going to go to a lawyer and say, well, why are they fining me, they continued it or something?
Yeah, they, they extended it, so the fines, no.
They extended it, so why should I be paying fines?
No, I agree, I think it's a good approach.
I don't think, I think you're right.
I think it's a good approach, you're saying, I think there should be a-
So, so make a vote to?
To deny the request for continuance.
I'll make a vote to deny the request for continuance.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I know you don't want to discuss some, oh, keep on discussing, but there are a few more, one's, one's a major one to me.
Well, tell us the major ones.
Before I say that, about the AEDA, AED signs, okay?
Oh, yeah.
That's not a, it's not a major one.
Yeah, dude, that's the, that's the numbered signs?
Right, so, the one, there's one on the street-
That looked like a spite.
It has like 14.
Yeah.
It always starts with a spite.
Well, he put up one way back, but it's just high off the ground, and it's not a bad-looking sign, the original one, but it's going to get covered with snow, and so, and then the plant's supposed to be seven feet high, so he did the seven-foot high, and that's the one at the street. Now, what he did was, when you first drive down, when I first was driving down, I thought it was like poster board on it.
It is, it is.
No, it's wood, you know?
It's cut like a preschooler cuts wood.
But anyways, he took, like, and I noted here, he took numbers that you'd use on the mail, the stick-on numbers that you use on the mailbox, and he put them up there, which is maybe fine, but on the first one, which is out at the street, now, he did put a seven-foot sign, seven-foot high sign, but it's-
It's like stuck in the-
Five numbers supposed to be there?
Yeah. Snow is here in the street.
So one's gone.
Isn't it supposed to be 147?
Yeah.
And instead it's 14?
Yes.
No, he, I know, he's missing a number.
No, no, yeah.
So what I'm saying is, are they going to, I think he had them there, I'm not sure if they have even had them.
No, he never had them.
No, hear me out before you say no. So I'm saying what he did, they're falling off, so it shouldn't be that way.
Sure.
Shouldn't be just a stick-on type, so bear with me, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not agreeing that what he, so I don't think they should be that way, that's another issue that I think the board and Erica's on, but we have to come up with a more thing. My opinion on all these, if you look at signs in town, they're manufactured signs, metal signs, numbers, what's the word, fused on to them, not a piece of wood. Now, each sign-
Don't these have to be approved by the selectmen or something?
I thought it was the fire department that-
No, I mean, just, if you read the byline, it has to be like three-inch high-
Black numbers.
Black numbers on a white-
Those are, although, I guess those are black numbers, the light, okay.
And they have to be arrows, which they don't have the arrows. The plan shows, the plan shows the arrows, but these are all connected, most of them, by two U bolts, the top part, the bottom part of the sign. One of them is, as I drove by, I thought it was a zip tie, but it's a hose clamp, did you ever use?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
One, another one only has one U bolt, so my opinion on that, if it did loosen, at least a second one would hold, but if it loosens, it's going to go down and then you don't have any sign. But there's no, and some of them are in concrete, there's one, two, three, five signs?
The, most of them are not even really in the ground. My husband went out with one, and just-
So some are in concrete and some aren't, one is in concrete, and in front of yours is, I think, it's, it's real dry, like they didn't put water in the concrete.
Oh, I didn't even think there was concrete, so this has been-
No, I think, yeah, but they didn't adhere, because I don't think we put enough water in it.
And it was so-
So anyway, was there a major part?
What?
Was there such a major issue?
Okay, now, the major one, you remember him dumping the stumps, the issue? Yeah. What happened, you drive up the road there, and on the right, far right, there's a wall on the property line, about 20 feet in, there's another wall, interior, and the driveway is very close to the wall, and so if you drive off the edge there, you're going to hit in the rocks, some of the rocks just sitting on top, and they're good size, and you'll hit the undercarriage, maybe it'll catch a tire, and you'll go drop three feet maybe? So that, and I hadn't noticed it way back, and it really wasn't on the plan to fill that with a three-to-one slope, even though a cross-section is sort of three-to-one slope and it filled. So I said, you got to fill that in, this is a year ago, and that's when he filled it in with stumps and was going to use tailings, do you remember that term? He used and says, he said it right in there that I approved that, the tailings, and I know I didn't, I know he never looked at the pile, and I told him around the field, he says, you approved that? I said, no, I didn't, there's no way I would have, tailings have roots in it, and you screen something, it's what's left over. So anyways, he has pulled that out. Now, as I'm looking at it in more detail, the reason why we have this issue, I think the driveway got built to the right more than it's supposed to be. On the plan, it's supposed to be, give or take, 10 feet off the wall, which, right, there's two walls.[1562.62]
Oh, oh, I see, oh, okay.
This is that wall and that wall. And that's about ten feet by scale.
So that would show.
But he's only about three feet off the wall in some places.
That would show up in the as well.
Yeah.
Which makes it dangerous.
Yeah.
When you had ten feet flat.
Yeah, you got plenty of.
You had plenty of room, and you know, and they could have a wall, but that makes sense. And that's why it wasn't graded down on the plan. But I think, and it'll show up in the as well, that either the wall's in the wrong location on the plan, or he moved the driveway over to the right, close to the wall. Now, once again, did he fill in, start to fill it in?
Well, he said that he took the wall out.
No, did he start to fill it in, no, it's done?
No, when he made the driveway, he cut the wall out. So the wall, do you notice when you drive up there? Sorry, but there's rock, it's a rock wall, there's a wall. He cut the wall right on that curve. Cause I remember when we walked that, before anything was built, he cut it and then made the driveway, cut bulldozers all out and then made the driveway there.
Before I even saw anything.
Yeah, probably.
And then he put the wall there.
What I was getting at was, did he, didn't he start to fill in that area when I mentioned it, right? Not with the right stuff, but didn't he start to fill it?
Yeah.
So he started to fill it. And I said, it's not correct material, he left it there, he finally pulled out. Now he's saying there's no need to fill it. Now, why would he have started to fill it? Good material, bad material is irrelevant. He did the work based on what should be done.
She's saying if he.
Now he's saying in his, or his son's letter, it's not part of the plan, or I have to go with the term he used.
Cause he knows it's not built properly.
If we don't have any bond to hold until that's built, what are we gonna?
Well, we have the bond, we have.
How far is thirty thousand?
What's that?
How far is thirty thousand?
So much money has been given back already that it's.
I mean, thirty thousand still, there's, there's a lot of things there, but they're not huge things.
Yep.
But they should be done, don't get me wrong, and I plan it down. But there's not retaining walls and drainage systems we put in and repaving the whole thing, there, there, there are a lot of items that. It's hard to say, but it can be covered, I would say, with it.
All right, well. I think we're, I think we're done with this.
All right, so action items for the next meeting. Fred, you're gonna try and update the process estimate? Based on what needs to be completed? I will have.
Can you add the things?
It'll be, it'll be after the report and.
And a final inspection report.
Can you add the crowning?
You're getting.
Yeah.
There'll be new items that he hasn't seen yet, I'll put that with.
I mean, I would just call it twenty-four A, or so, or twenty-four R, you're revising twenty-four.
No, I'm just gonna say disregard that.
Or just if you got twenty-four.
Just disregard.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make it nay and just say disregard twenty-four, so no one, anybody ever has.
Yeah, so then you can say twenty-four A and then.
But twenty-four should be thrown away.
Exactly, exactly, and then that makes it clear.
And then hopefully we'll hear from town council by the next.
And I'll quickly place this twenty-four there.
Perfect.
And I know you spent more than enough time on this, so I'm really sorry, just one more quick question, if you don't mind, I, thank you. Um, I really wanna stop this from happening again to other people. So if a bond gets pulled, does that somehow go on his record? Is, like, I'm in the process of drafting letters to other towns who's working to form them.
And you could call the Better Business Bureau and post on there.
All right, okay.
I mean, that's definitely an area where, I mean, typically, people, you know, when they look for a contract, if it's someone that they don't know or haven't heard of, you go on the Better Business Bureau and see if there's any complaints that have been filed.
Yeah.
So I would suggest filing a complaint and log.
I think some of us have already.
Okay.
Okay.
But that, that stays on there, I think, for a long time.
Okay. But a bond being pulled, if that is what happens, doesn't like get, doesn't.
I don't know.
Okay. I'm just trying to prevent this from other people.
Thank you very much.
Is it a cash bond, correct? Some by him, or is it a third party involved?
Yeah, it's with the bank.
With the bank?
Yeah, so it's what we call a tripartite agreement. It's cash flow.
Yeah, he gave it upfront.
He gave it upfront.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So Mark.
I could still be a mark. I could. But they're making faces and. Michael, that one, sorry.
Yeah, I agree.
I feel a little lost.
Sorry about that. Would've been longer to you, right? All right, so.
Oh, this is Tattmore?
Yeah, Tattmore.
Yes. So I think I just.
Oh, yeah.
I haven't done that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna send the audit.
You can go to Mark's happy place or whatever.
Sorry.
Oh, yes.
So we need to approve the bond estimate.
I'll tell this one to the board.
Huh?
Up the. You gave me the wrong. I showed it just before.
Four hundred percent. All right, do you wanna go through this? So, I've heard that everything's going smoothly over there.
Yeah, everything's, everything's been going well.
Yeah. Do you wanna go through?
Sure, what I've done here, Mike had submitted an estimate to me, which was just, and I think, do they have that?
They have the original attached to the performance bond narrative.
So it's, it's. He's saying that check to what?
It'll show best, it's a standard show that this is.
Oh, okay.
So that's what the habit text submitted, and the numbers, I understand, came from their contractor, Hyver and Sons, okay? Now, with that said, all of those numbers are in red over the right side of mine, by his line, by his items.
So, your. No, so you, they said twenty-two thousand, you're saying twenty-eight thousand?
There's two line items there that are.
Oh, these two could combine, I'm sorry, that's the only thing different, twenty-eight, see, they're twenty-five to six. One's labor, one's materials.
Oh, okay.
Combined, there's one. So that was the twenty-eight.
Well, you have twenty-eight, five years, twenty-eight.
So all in red is his, their numbers.
Okay.
And then you can see how, what I came up with as comparison.
Okay.
And then as we go on to the second sheet, there are additional items that they didn't include that I can show you.
Okay, so, so I don't need this sheet?
No, I'm just saying that's where that came.
Okay, all right. So you added an extra five. So you wanna just walk through it? Any differences?
Um, let me look at the bottom of that first subtotal. I had ninety thousand, they had ninety-three seven.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's an estimate in three thousand, there's not, I mean, I'm on the lower side, so they're on the higher side.
Yep.
On the next one, being the top course, we're just about there, about six hundred dollar difference.
Yep.
On the next one, once again, the subtotal, I'm at forty thousand, they're at forty-three.
Yep.
Okay, so for the most part, I'm at one forty, they're at one forty-seven, on the items they had listed.
Yes, so there was a reason, it's a reason that they have detention basin and you don't.
Um, that's the trees, oh, detention basin's done.
Yeah. Okay.
That's one reason why it's a little higher.
Okay, so that.
I don't know if maybe, the fifteen was a low number, so there might be things they, at the time, they thought still had to be cleaned up, whatever. But it's all done, the berms are in, the spillways in, and the outlet, it's seeded, it's grass, grass is grown. So I had nothing, it was done, I shouldn't quite put it, I hated. So then the second sheet is the only difference. Now, this, you don't know, if I may be correct, Mike doesn't have any issues with what we have in the second sheet, no. So I think there's another thirty thousand there. The nineteen-one-ten and the eleven-two.
So you added.
Okay, so I added all the bounds, nine rods.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We can look at, so the bounds, nine rods, that goes along the right way in these, the bitumen's curve.
Yep.
Um, the drainage structures, only four of them have to be raised, to, how to raise them before they put final pavement down, you know, so that has to be. The fieldstone head wall, and you know what, that might, that might be part of that fifteen hundred in the detention basin, now that I think of it. Is this fieldstone head wall, is it done?
I mean, yeah.
I don't have it there, but it is here, yeah, so there's a wash as far as there. He had fifteen hundred, I had two thousand, if that's what it was.
Yeah, maybe.
Um, there's a gravel access drive off the road to the detention basin. It's somewhat in there, they've covered it with a lot of mulch for erosion purposes, as if they've used a lot of their wood chipping. So there's a real cleanup, and then it's gonna be a little messed up, so we'll have to fix it, so I just put it in as a whole item still. Uh, so you remove the erosion control, it's always something that usually isn't put in, and they find, oh, we better put it in. The ballards, the ballards is a questionable thing. This is the ballards that go, the pipes that go in front of the cistern. And there every four feet, there's seventeen of them on there. They, from the design, different from the design plans, a different cistern was accepted by the fire chief and put in. Still of the same size and all, but, so the difference is, where a cistern's lengthless table, there's a stand pipe here, a vent pipe here, a filled pipe there and so forth. And the ballards were protecting the pipes for many trucks going in. On the new, on the one that got put in, everything's consolidated in the middle, in a eight-foot swath, let's say, overall, not even. So they only put in three ballards, instead of the sixteen or seventeen, I believe it was seventeen, by the length of it, protecting those pipes, everything else of the cistern is underground. So, Mike, when I called, when I put this in, Mike called me back and said, there's only three, that's what was approved or on a design plan, which I haven't seen a plan. I talked to Bisham today, and they don't know a plan that said that. So I talked to Mike before tonight, and I said, I'm still gonna leave, I had already sent it, I think. And I said, I'm still gonna leave it there, it'd say, the seventeen minus the three becomes fourteen, and twenty-eight hundred dollars. It's not, I didn't feel like it was a deal breaker, whether it's in there or not. We can adjust it, leave it in there, it's gonna get to the board. So that's what that is. I still don't know, no one seems to know where it came from.
It was, it was never on a plan that the company that made the cistern, Lamar Concrete, uh, this unit, they designed the ballards with the unit. It was never on a plan, it's just, that's, that's what they gave us, and they've done a couple of other ones in town, I don't know where specifically. But they were confident that this was a design that the fire chief, um, accepted. And so we called the fire chief today just to see if, you know, to make sure that that was the case. And he, he had actually been by and looked at it today and was fine with it. So, you know, the things that he's concerned with being protected are protected. It's not a big enough item that I would wanna hold anything up, so if you guys aren't comfortable, you know.
But it could be deducted from this total.
Minimizing it, so.
Either way.
I mean, it's, it's just that one, it's an eight-foot section you said?
There's three, the three ballards are there protecting the pipes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I'd say it's about eight feet, yeah. I think it's probably a little twist, but they extended beyond.
Okay, but there was a thought that there would be fourteen as opposed to three?
That's what's on the plan, and that came from standard details from the fire department before. This Lamar tank that was put in, wasn't the one that was spec'd out on the plan. It got accepted before it got installed as a change.
Gotcha, okay.
But. I don't know who knew or didn't know. I certainly didn't know that with how the pipe, as a matter of fact, I never saw this, that key until it was getting installed, I said, something's different here. And that's when I found out that something's like changed. So anyways, I felt, because we were running out of time here, to leave it in and deal with it. Either verbally here, or it stays in, or it gets crossed off and deducted by twenty-eight hundred. All right, they saw it to be painted, so it's maybe twenty-five hundred, I don't know, the number might be. Between Mike and I, we agree it's not an issue to, he doesn't wanna walk out of here, because this was a questionable issue, we're not sure it improved. So who's that?
Yes, I did.
Do, does the tank need to be protected from the trucks rolling onto it or anything?
No, it's, it's covered, it's filled it two feet of fill, and it's already covered now. It, the protection is for the pipes that are sticking up, so they don't get snapped off.
Okay.
But no, the, and, and there's a pad leading up to.
So a full pumper backing up to turn around wouldn't.
No, they don't even, they don't even turn around, it's a pull-off that's forty feet by eight, twelve feet, that they pull in sideways like a turnout. I mean, cause they have, they have connections on the side. And, and that's still, that's all paved, and this tank is still off the pavement by, I don't know, five feet anyways, or something, you probably don't know. But I'm just trying to think of it off the top of my head. It's not great, and it's still buried. The pavement is still two feet above the top of the tank. So, um, the ballards and the police detail I had, in there, they had a police detail when they were paving the binder course. And it took about a half a day, so I just wondered, it's not a big item, but it's still there. And that's on the roadway, so the additional items on the driveway, there's moment seating along the driveway. The twelve-inch, consider the twelve-inch pipe that goes underneath one of the private drives, part of the common driveway, cause it connects the swale of the common driveway, running long length of it. And that which is moment seat really, and then riprap at those pipe ends, and then the directional signs, the house lock signs.
Why'd you add that?
What? I had it, no, I had it. What I usually do, I look at all the details in the plans, and that's, that gives me a starting point. If there's a detail and it should be in there, was it in it, was it built not, or not yet? That's how it is. So we come up in the end, the difference really being all these, this thirty thousand of additional items compared to what they had and what I had, we're in.
So the only contention point is the ballards? You tell us, you know, where do you want us to be?
From what I understand, the fire chief has said it's okay.
Yeah.
I haven't seen that, Bisham doesn't know that, you know.
Seeing those, end up taking them out. I mean, if it's not, if it's not gonna be.
Not done yet.
So, I mean, you know, it's just, it's just kind of fudge factor.
Right.
I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about me going dining it, you know, I mean, if, you know, I, I just, you know. Cause I'm sure that there's something also that was missed in this somewhere.
It's an estimate, don't forget.
It's an estimate, yeah. All right.
So your preference is just keep it the way it is?
Probably, yeah, I mean, I would say so, just, the same goes, not changing, we have it all formalized here.
Yeah, what's the, the bond amount, getting the one seventy-nine twenty?
Yep, so that, so then I just did the multiplication, so one point five multiplier, so it'd be two fifty-six, three eighty.
One point five?
Yeah, they did one point five, yeah.
Um, Eric, what's that number, two fifty-six one?
Three eighty. Somebody wants to check. And you can see from the previous discussion that. You can see where that number has come from, so.
I have to say it on the public, that his contract is pretty big. Does this hand say anything, or does this say?
Our goal is to just.
In the end, just hope, hope all these people.
Two fifty-six, three eighty.
So, I mean, we've always just used that number, is that what most towns use, or is every town different?
I don't know.
A lot of them use it in a high percentage.
When I do, when I presented mine, I put a fifty percent contingency, that's what I see in other towns, working with us, all the towns will work it out.
I mean, we've all used one point five, so that's not going to change it now, but.
But it's a fifty percent contingency, though.
He said fifteen.
Fifteen.
Oh, fifteen, yeah, sorry, yeah. All right, that's what we always use, so.
Yeah, it's not, it shouldn't be changed in there.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And nothing personal, but you guys, you don't know this, but you've been through a lot of issues, you know, with all the different projects here that just get way out of whack, all of them.
And we've dealt with the new ones, yeah.
It's amazing how some of the stuff is going on, as you all know.
Yeah, you know, we've certainly done partial bond releases in the past, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, cause we're working on the electric right now, so that might come back.
Yeah, the electric is probably getting close, probably eighty percent done, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't see many other items here, though, that we're able to do.
Oh, right.
When we redid this, I know we talked about it when we looked at the rules and regs, limiting the number of partial releases, did we end up doing that?
We did, but they still could get it, it's just there's a mutation out to how many they can come in.
What'd we say?
I have to get back on, I think it's like two or three now.
It's a number versus a.
It could be a number or it could be a percentage.
Because at one point, Centennial was coming almost every single week.
That's what it's got it.
Yeah. Almost every single meeting, they were coming for a partial bond release, so, so I think we limited it to like two or three partial releases.
And then they wouldn't have done the work anyway, so it didn't matter.
Like per year or over the?
Over the.
Project, probably.
Yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, so we've already given chunks.
What are we supposed to do, these footpaths on the front end? I think we might be doing the footpaths, so between electric and the footpaths, so maybe we're all less done.
I mean, the curbing and all, to be honest with you, really, everything can be, continue to be worked on, except for the, except for the curbing.
Well, he's just trying to, I think, build a chunk of.
Right, but what he can't do right now, because of weather, is the bitumen's curve and the top coast, merco, all the other stuff, I think, can be, without looking in detail, can be done.
The electrical's a huge chunk.
Right, I, I think, I think I'll be back.
And they're, they're working on that.
I think I'll be back in a few months with the electric and the two footpaths, or maybe in the spring. So it'll be a sixty thousand dollar reduction.
Yeah, yeah.
Fifty percent.
If you get the as well's done now.
Yeah.
Partial, partial as well.
We do like to do the as well's as we go.
That's a good way to do it.
Yeah, we're doing it that way.
So if everybody's okay with that number, twenty-two thousand, I mean, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, three eighty.
So the only thing there, um, so there, there write-up for the, so their agreement with the lending company?
Yeah.
So I haven't had a chance to have town council take a look at this, I think usually, town council always looks at all the legal documents. So I don't know if you wanna just, your approval be contingent upon town council saying, okay, this warning is fine, or whatever.
The, the worrying on the performance bond?
Yeah.
Is there a place on here where we have to put the actual number or no?
There it is, yep.
It's gotta be up, it's all.
First paragraph.
So that'll have to be updated?
Yeah, right, I need to talk to the lending company. Yeah, right, I need to talk to the, to the lending company.
Huh?
I need to give this final number to the lending company, um, this is a draft, just.
Okay.
See if you do that.
So we would accept a contingent on town council approving the performance bond agreement?
Yeah, the document, yeah. And then obviously you're approving the number, so.
Yep. All right, let's do it.
Make motion to approve the bond for Tatmore subdivision for the total of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars contingent upon town council's approval of the subdivision performance bond document.
No second. Okay, all right.
Bye.
All right.
All right, thank you.
You guys are doing, doing good up over there?
Yeah, we're, we're starting the first houses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you already have, um, fires or, or you're going to first get to build the model house?
Yeah, we're gonna build two specs.
How big are those houses?
It's like thirty-five hundreds.
Yeah, thirty-five hundred, I, I don't know, actually, these are, these first two are thirty-seven hundreds.
So, Michael, what is the sign frame for getting building permits? Because that also needs approval from the board for the lot releases from your covenant.
Yes.
So that's something you're gonna be looking for at the next meeting to get their sign up on.
A lot of leases.
Because there's, there's a form that they sign that, then you report it to registry and then you have to go to.
Yes.
Get my signature for the.
Yeah, so we're filling the cistern with water next week and, and I think we need to do that before we can apply for building permits, so we're gonna be doing that in the next few weeks.
So you're gonna need, because you won't be able to get your permits out of that.
How does that, go initiate that?
So I have a template we use on some other subdivisions, I'll fill it out for this and send it to you so that you can see what it looks like if you're agreement, then basically we just all have the board at the next meeting, um, as long as the bond's been posted and it's good.
Yeah.
Get confirmation on that and they can start signing up a lot.
Okay.
Oh, uh, you know what?
My next meeting.
I take it back, actually. Um, because this is a total amount, this is like, I apologize, I think I missed speaking, so, because you're, the bond is for the entire amount, that's why we.
So it releases all the lots?
Yes, it releases it from the, all the lots.
Yeah.
So this, this document here replaces the covenant. Okay, forget what I did.
So all the lots are released?
Yeah, this is different than, than the century, this is like Golden Farm kind of, where all the lots have been released, okay.
Oh, well, actually, so maybe we should talk about inclusionary?
Oh, right, right.
So, we, we don't, that's, um, building permits based, and we said it's a percentage for each building permit.
Yes.
So you wanna?
I don't, I have to.
So, so, so you know our inclusionary bylaw, for every eighth houses, you have to give one affordable, so you guys would be having to give one affordable, right? That's correct?
Um, eleven is one, yes, so one.
Yeah.
But, um, this one, no, they were talking about, we need to get back and.
Do you know, it's Still River.
Yes, he was gonna build the, you know, Still River, and then I think they were gonna, they were, they had some leniency there, if you write, if you read the permit, I think they have up to the ninth building permit to make a decision on that, and then after that, if they want to do the fee and lieu.
But how does that work with that bylaw?
We might have done that before we did the bylaw.
I think it was approved, I think you.
Well, except by law, we say, you know, we give up, we charge a proportion, a por, a percentage of.
But their, but their, their plan was to always build it.
To always build it.
Right, so you could not do the fee and lieu.
So that's just the fee and lieu.
But they wanted sort of this, this exit plan in case they decide not to do that, so we said, okay, so that, that's the way that it was written in the condition.
Oh, okay.
That if they decide to do the fee and lieu, they can do it after, like, I can't remember that, I think it's the ninth.
So they're gonna build the unit on Still River, allegedly?
I don't know, because his partner on that is Marco Hagan, I've asked Marco Hagan and he seemed very question, you know, he didn't seem all that confident about that, so I don't know where that's from.
So then, so then we don't need a percentage of the fee and loots instead of doing a fee and lieu?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a little bit.
So don't, we do need lots released though, don't we?
Um, so may, um, what had it?
I don't think this.
Because we released, we released Ho and Farm lots.
Did you?
Yeah.
All at once?
I think we're still holding on to five of them because, aren't we? Um, we, we allowed them to build on five until they, we dealt with the inclusionary.
Oh, but that's not related to a covenant, that's just related to the fact that they weren't needing the condition, they were supposed to donate or, uh, deed that lot to us.
Yeah.
By the, how many building permits, they didn't do that, so we said, okay, we'll give you up to five more.
Yeah.
But you need to get that deed, so they've done that, they've deeded the lot to us.
Okay.
That was a different thing.
Okay.
This, this is just strictly, we're talking about the performance guarantee, the bond, initially it was covenant, now it's being transferred over to this, to this bond, to this cash.
I mean, if you say everything's in order, then.
Um.
It's a lot of balls in there.
As long as you don't sell.
Let me talk to town council about how that should be drafted.
I think we're gonna, for all the lots being released.
Yes, so some form that the board will sign that says that.
Just to verify the wording, can you, on the inclusionary, you know, how, at what point, what, what?
I think it's building nine, but I'll, I'll, I'll check.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I want to make sure we don't get ourselves into a corner of lots gets sold off and, you know, inclusionary becomes questionable.
Yeah.
Still River, Still River doesn't have eleven. I can't remember that, I don't, I, I'd be surprised if we did nine.
Yeah.
I bet you the number's five.
Well, yeah, I don't know why it would be nine.
Um, yeah, maybe I'm thinking of Q nine as half of eighteen, so maybe for this one it's five.
It's probably five.
Yeah.
That's probably what we did. Okay. But the point being, they don't need anything for the first couple of lots.
I don't think so, I'll double check.
Yeah.
But I'll make sure that that gets covered.
Good, good. Is that it? Sorry for making you wait so long.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, take care.
Um, I don't think we really have anything, sure, you know, by law, there's.
Yeah, the only thing I added is political sign bylaw.
Can I go back a step if you don't mind?
Yeah.
You know, you have to either vote or, you sort of voted on Saturday the key sign.
Yep.
Because.
For that point.
They started. Right, they stated just.
A greater.
A greater, and I, and I made this comment that a lot of times they don't have enough gravel, they gotta bring it over, and they'll get the greatest and more to work with, but I, is your permit, line stipulation just agree?
I don't think we specifically said just a greater, so I think it's just whatever they need.
Okay, so let's, now they made a point saying that they, it's gonna be quiet and no one should complain.
No backup, yeah, not.
But you gotta, you gotta, and they're gonna have.
I think we allow them to work, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, if, if, I'm gonna be out there and if the, if the police come.
Well, that's why Eric is gonna, it's at the event, so. I don't think we'll put any stipulations on it.
Okay, we allow them to work, okay.
Ready? Yeah, no, there's no stipulations.
It's one day, it's the one last chance to get it done before the season, because I think this is it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And all this is tied to our refusal to let them have building permits until there's a road built because of the fire department, is that correct?
Well, a good example is that you couldn't drive, if there was a house up there being built and something happened, they can't get there under this condition.
Certainly, certainly that's a bad site because it goes so far.
It makes sense.
Six forty-nine, you see how soft that is, you, the tire racks are like this and they're bringing in the gravel.
Really?
The fire truck could never get up there with the way it is right now, and they're paving Friday, but that's just a common driveway, but.
Yeah.
And that's why you sort of have this whole bylaw so that isn't a sloppy situation come bad weather.
No, it makes sense to get that paved if they can before.
I agree with you a hundred percent, so.
Okay, um, what's this political bylaw? I thought we asked.
Page four.
We had, didn't we ask Pam?
Thanks, Fred.
Oh, great.
What's page four? Sorry, you guys.
The political sign, this is, this is Pam's.
So was this one, was this during a meeting I missed?
Well, yeah, Pam is, maybe like two or three or so.
Yeah. I keep shooting it down.
I told them not, I told them not to.
They weren't supposed to anyway, but.
Or work that day?
Yeah, it's a holiday.
The day after?
Mm-hmm.
Is it?
So.
The holiday?
I don't think.
Thursday and the.
Federal holiday.
And Friday?
Friday's not.
No, but I told them specifically to not plan on you being available for that day.
Well, they told me that they were only gonna have this one guy, Art, doing some, spreading the gravel, so I decided to stop by just to see how the gravel was going. And like I said, Jamie was there, his father was there, four other guys were there, Art was there, and they were all working, so I'm glad I went by, but I wasn't planning on it, and I said, I might as well, because it, because the gravel was an important part and they could have done hundreds of feet of it, but it was being seen, so I wanted to see, but I got there, I couldn't believe how many people, there were more people than they had all summer.
Wow.
You know, really.
This is the Friday after Thanksgiving, isn't it?
Yeah, and Wednesday afternoon, they said.
It was cold in sunny.
They said they weren't gonna be there, and only one guy wasn't who was normally there, everyone else plus was there.
We appreciate you going out though.
No, it's proud of their day, nice, man, but they said they weren't, they, more than one person told me they weren't, Bill being one of the owner, said, no, we won't be here, we're all taking the day off. And then I think they looked and said, we know we're gonna make those days, right? Good night, everyone.
Good night, Fred. So we asked, or I asked Pam?
Yep.
Can she come to the next meeting?
Pam is out at the moment, um, she can, she can come in.
She sent the email or something.
Yeah, that's fine, if she sends an email.
Yeah, she can, she can come in and, you wanted to know, like, the reasoning behind the bylaw, and I did ask her and she said they, they get questioned all the time about what they can do with political sign bylaws, and she, at this point, doesn't have time for them.
Yeah.
Um, so that and, I think she just feels in general that there are so many of them and they're not taken down in a timely manner that she just thinks that it would be.
I haven't really noticed many not being taken down.
Yeah.
No, I think, I think it's, I think it's a, there's nothing wrong with having guidance.
No, I think it's helpful for the people that work in town hall, and, um, she's happy to come in in January when she's back.
Okay.
If you, if you need her to.
So do we want to talk about this at all now or just wait till?
I, I mean, your idea is pretty immaculate, and it's.
Yeah.
You remove the one sign, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, like, the private property, public property, I already kind of thought that was.
It is kind of fair, but I mean, but it's not really spelled out, um, and it, and people run into it periodically.
So the, can remove it from public works?
So what happens if they don't remove it within forty-five days?
Within ten days?
Ten days.
I think we have a right to go. Well, no, it says they may be required to maintain for a period not to exceed forty-five days prior to the date of election.
So you can't put them up forty-five days before and then they have to take them down within ten days after.
Within ten days after, so what happens if you don't take them down?
Then we can go and pull them.
Okay, so it's not, because you're not gonna know who placed them, I guess, is my whole point, so you just pull them and trash them and that's it.
Well, we hold on.
Maybe we hold on to ten days. You hold on for ten days.
So someone goes and says, oh, you pulled my sign on whatever road.
Oh, that's the, oh, that's the public property one, what about private, can we go on to private, can they really go on to private property and take people's signs?
Well, I guess they own it, um, well, that's a, that's a good question, because we're saying, we're talking about private property.
Can we find them? We're gonna have to find them for after ten days.
Well, it would technically be a zoning fine.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, that's.
Three hundred seems pretty steep, but that's what it would be.
The price you paid.
All right, okay.
I'll have to like about that, because he'd be the one that had to go pull it and all that's gonna, he can't, he, he knows all of that, so.
Yeah, he can.
It can even go, yeah, I don't know if he can go.
Well, because if, if, even some private property, it would fall under the general sign dialogue at that point.
But I still don't.
So it'd be an illegal sign.
Yes, but I don't know if you can pull it, I think you can force it, you could probably find them, but I don't think you can, I don't know, I don't know.
I mean, yeah, yeah, I think a phone call to, to the homeowner would probably get it have gone.
Hopefully, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And the size, the size would be, or some of the, some of the more excessive signs that show periodically.
Okay, all right, so Danielle, did you get any issue on the stormwater one, it was really simple.
You don't have to, you can do it.
If it just says do whatever Danielle says.
No, I mean, the good thing is that, so the only question I have is, what is it, what are we asking to comply with this? Like, who has to.
Business, that, to that section there that talks about designer, this, under the designer review, review criteria, that's for all commercial and town.
But we wanted, I wanted it, I think we also wanted to comply with the subdivisions and new.
Which we do, because that's in our subdivision regulations.
But not the volume?
Uh, no, but we will address that, so I haven't got, this is just for town meeting stuff.
Oh, so you don't need to have that for town meeting?
No, 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 no.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood.
And we, we have started to update the common driveway regs, so that's already been done.
Okay, so that, so those, that, I don't need to go to, okay, I misunderstood that, so, um, so this is just for business, well, commercial.
Commercial, so business limited, business industrial.
Industrial, business, yeah, that's perfect, then that's fine.
So I set the volume for the two-ten, twenty-five, and hundred, I don't know.
We might want to put that in here because, so the mass stormer.
I didn't, I thought I updated it and put that.
No, it just says up to the hundred-year storm, so the mass stormer rights only say two-ten and hundred, so if, which is fine, I don't care, I mean, point five is, I'm trying to take a clue if I can, but I would list, um, I would list two-ten and hundred to be.
Okay.
Not just say for up to, I would list the same storms to be consistent.
Okay.
And if you want, I mean, you can add two-ten, twenty-five, and hundred, or.
I mean, do we, do we want the numbers there or do you want that in the regulation somewhere that we can update easily?
Well, these, these you, you wouldn't update, those are, those are standard.
Yeah.
Like, those aren't really ever gonna change, um, what changes is your rainfall and what you end up.
So you want the twenty-five years?
I, I would, I would add it then now.
I don't see why not.
Um, the only other, and it's pushing it too much, we don't need to do that, um, I only say this because I, in my company, have instructed all my engineers to do this just because of rainfall, so the Mass State Stormwater Standards uses, requires you use rainfall from TB forty, which is nineteen forty, meaning the rainfall data is, is seventy, almost seventy years old, um, there's newer rainfall data out, out there from NOAA, NOAA has released this atlas from two thousand and fourteen, and, um, they're higher rainfalls because it's on more current rain, so, like, when I do my designs now, we use the NOAA atlas, um, and, and it's not a requirement, um, in Massachusetts, it's just, we do it because And it's not a requirement in Massachusetts, it's just, we do it because we're cognizant of climate change. So it's just something I, we could add into this, but if you think it's pushing it too much for the town, I mean, we don't have to, it's just, it's really design, having them design to more current rainfall data. But I don't want to, like, I really want them to meet the V bonds, I don't want to push them too much, you know, so I don't know...
I mean, and all this is to protect the town.
It's to protect, I mean, we're constantly hearing, and this is an exacerbated year where we've had a horrible, I mean, I don't want to say horrible, but really high rains and just a lot of flooding and stuff. So it's, it's all to, it's, you're designing to more current climate. I mean, that's, that's all it's saying.
I mean, we routinely update the flood maps.
Absolutely.
So why would we...
Update the rainfall. And I'll tell you, other states, Vermont and Rhode Island have already required, meaning that Massachusetts is just behind the format. So it's just a more, but there are certain, there's a bunch of towns in Massachusetts that are already required. So it's just, we're not going out on a limb here.
I mean, realistically, what is used? Some of the basins get a little bit bigger?
Yeah, so basically, yeah, like...
Is new construction, you know, whether it's 20 feet long or 30 feet long, isn't...
Yeah, and you compare it with existing too, so your existing is going to have higher rainfall, your proposed is going to have higher rainfall. So it's not just for your proposed, you know, it is...
So it's just your basins or, or drain pipes too basins or?
It's, it's... It's both, but usually your drain pipes are, you know, they're designed for much smaller. They're usually like 10, 10-year or 25-year. Your basins are designed up to your 100-year, so those are where you're going to really, it's going to be minimal...
It's retention, right? Not, you're talking about retention?
Well, it's not just retention, it's looking at, so for a 100-year storm right now in our area, it's about 6.6 inches based on the 1940s data. It's about 8.5 inches.
Oh, that's significantly more, I would have expected that.
Yes, so, and that's what the data is showing, is that we're getting more rain. And there's certain parts of the United States that are getting less.
It's like a 30% bigger design then.
I wouldn't equate it to exactly that because your existing is also having that high, so you compare, so you do an analysis of what your existing runoff is, and then you do an analysis of your proposed, and your existing is, has a higher rainfall. So your existing number is going to go up as well. So what would have been under the 1940s number might have been a much lower number when you bring, using 2014 rainfall data, that number's going to go up. So you're going to be able to have, so it's, it's, yes, it's going to get bigger, but not 30% bigger. That's because your existing is going up as well.
And you just need to meet your existing.
You just need to match.
You don't need to go better than that.
Exactly, you need to either meet or be less than whatever your existing runoff is for the site. So I can add that.
Ask questions.
Talk Nara.
It's just, I mean, I thought of it afterwards because I...
I kind of know what you're talking about.
I heard those words.
It seems like English.
I mean, just in my firm, we, for any client, pretty much we're using a NOAA atlas 14 because it just, and we do a lot of work for municipalities, so that's one way that we're trying to protect it. So we're just doing above and beyond the regulations, so I'll try to add revisions here and send it to you.
Oh, sure.
Housing Production Plan Committee, so we got this one candidate. He's the one kind of out of, so we have four coming from boards and, I don't know what to do with it. Four coming from boards and three from non-boards, I guess. So this guy would be non-board. So he seems fine, seems great, chunk ho. The other person I've been trying to recruit would be Davia's way, non-board, and he would be a great candidate because he finances these projects and he's been on the Affordable Housing Committee, so he'd be good, and he's been on the planning board, of course, so he'd be good. We got Penny locked up, sort of. Erica?
Yeah, she's locked up, nice. I mean, the board will have to actually formally appoint her.
I said I would do it.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
We need at least one person from planning board, but if somebody else wants to do it as well, that'd be good.
I think I said I would reach out to Brian from...
Yeah, Brian. And then it would be nice to get one selectman.
I think I said I was going to reach out to Stan.
I mean, whoever wants to do it.
Or just selectmen in general.
Yeah, whoever wants to step forward. Anybody else? I mean, planning board too, we can, you know, if we want to rotate or something like...
I need one more person.
Well, I mean, we could push the ads again. It'd be nice to get somebody completely out of our general pool, you know, like this
Oh, what about Marco Hagan?
Oh, yeah.
He's the president.
Yeah.
Yeah, because he, I mean, he was one of the speakers of the Affordable Housing that we, you know, talked away to, too.
He was here for a meeting too.
Yeah, yeah.
Were you at the one or the other? Yeah, that would be good. Really want to get that going.
Me too.
Especially because it seems like, you know, I want to do the senior housing bylaw, but it kind of seems like we won't wait for that, so. Get that going. And approval planning department budget?
Well, I forgot to print it out, I'm sorry, I don't know where my head is today.
Strike down what I've been up and walking for.
It's the same as last, I'm sorry.
2X.
Level, level funded.
Whatever you want, Erica, you can have. Please don't leave. That's all right?
Do we need to...
All in favor?
Oh, yeah, I was just saying...